Good afternoon. I'm so happy to be back and ready to carry on the work that we started a month ago. I wanted to start off our meeting by just saying thank you for having me. I'm excited to do the work with you guys, and I'd like to have David introduce.
Thank you. You're going to open the meeting first?
Yeah, because we don't have the agenda, so we're going to do the pledge. Can we do that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we're going to stand. Flag is right there in the front of the room. Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. Official.
All right. So you remember me? I'm Terry V. I work for CSBA. I've been a board member for 24 years up in Fall River Joint Unified School District. I've enjoyed it immensely. I found my passion. I never thought I would be in any kind of education. It's very rewarding. So thank you again for having me, and I'm going to introduce David. He can introduce himself.
Good afternoon. This microphone reminds me of Bob Barker. This is right. It's like two and a half feet long, so I'm going to try not to be distracted by that. Thanks for having me here. I'm happy to be a part of this exercise. I'm an attorney. I'm a partner with the Law Firm of Atkinson-Andelson. Andelson has been legal counsel to this district for many, many years. And like Terry, I'm also a board member, not of a school district, but of a special district. I sit on the board of the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Appeals Board. So we both have.
Yes.
In addition, I do work with school districts up and down the state and have been involved in recently in some of the more interesting cases. I don't know if you remember this year, the Oakley School Board incident. The board was caught on microphone denigrating the parents, and the entire board resigned. I was tasked with putting that board back together again. We have a brand-new board, a new superintendent. I don't know if you read the LA Times yesterday about the Santa Monica-Malibu divorce. That's also involved in. So I have worked with boards for about 20 years now and happy to be sharing the floor and some presentation time with Terry today. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk more about some specifics. Able to watch some of your meetings recently and have some thoughts that I wanted to share with everyone, and I'll defer to Terry on the order of things.
Yeah, so what we're going to accomplish, what I hope to accomplish today is finishing your governance handbook. We're going to go over the norms that we agreed on last workshop, and then we'll be going over our team protocols after that. So I wanted to get started with a little debrief. I'm going to start with Scott and a reflection on the opening of school and how you're feeling about it.
Well, thank you, Terry, and welcome. Well, probably like many of us, especially those of us at work in the field of education, it's anxiety just in regards to being back in person, understandably so. But it is very exciting to be back in person. I'll say that much. And you know, just the student events that are happening, and you know, those that know me know I love athletics and football out there. So that's, it's just really good to see kids back doing what we always have them doing in the norm, right, which is just being kids. But there has been many challenges along with that, as we know. So I think, you know, for us as a board, safety is our top priority for our kids and our staff and our community, and ensuring at the same time, though, that we're providing a quality education for them. So that's normally a tough challenge, but it's even exacerbated more so now. So for even ourselves, like I'll speak for me personally, there's been a high level of anxiety, but also at the same time, a high level of excitement and motivation as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Flores?
Well, it's been, you know, very, you know, pros and cons. I mean, kids are happy to be back, teachers are, but there's lots of fear. We have cases of COVID, and then people, I'm just going to be truthful. People don't know the protocols. They don't know the. They don't know who's populating the dashboard and that, you know, and then social media. Ay yi yi. Social media is rampant, so. I mean, I don't know how, I don't know how we communicate and help our, you know, our families and our kids and our employees to feel safe and. So that there's, you know, even though we have all these things in place, which are great, you know, we still have this ambiance of fear and trepidation. And so. Love being back.
Yes.
And so the teachers, teachers are also very cautious. You know, we have incidences where people haven't worn their masks, the adults, and that's not good. You know, how do we handle that, you know? I know everybody has to be vaccinated by October 15th. And, you know, what about the people that choose not to? That are our employees? You know, what, you know, what's the legality behind that? What can we as a district do legally, you know? And so I just, I worry. I'm a mother. Grandma. My daughter. I worry a lot.
Thank you. Thank you. Myra?
It's okay. Abigail. It's okay. I know our students' families were all excited about the return. So that's a positive thing, is that everyone, I think, was wanting to be around people versus to staying home.
Right.
My frustration is on how things are maneuvering and the expectations. I, you know, when it comes to safety, there's a lot more than was expected. I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Hill?
Thank you. And I hope you don't mind me taking mine back to August of 1971.
Okay. All right.
I was hired to work in this district, and I never wanted to teach. I told people I didn't want to teach. People begged me to apply. I was hired, so as soon as I got hired, my, the thing that I was getting was, oh my God, listen, because I was hired to work at San Bernardino High School. They said, you're going to the prison. And I said, oh my God, what have I got myself into? So 50 years ago, I went through that anxiety, and I'm going through it now. But even then, things worked out okay because there were people out there who cared about kids, and that's the thing that I appreciate so much. You know, if you talk to Doc long enough, he talks about, I'm here for the kids. I want to do what's best for kids.
Right.
Come to have all the answers, but we do expect him to find them somewhere down the road, and that's what we did at San Bernardino High. So I had eight wonderful years there. So I look forward to the next three and a half wonderful years, and it's exciting for us to be better, do better, because that's the expectation. So I'm just jazzed looking at what we can be. And we have the board that can do that. We have the leadership team that can do that. We have the superintendent, and that's what I'm looking forward to. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Rogers?
Yes. Ditto to what has been said, so I don't want to repeat that. I will say that I am a product of San Bernardino High School. After, she had my brothers and whatnot, but, but I came out okay, so no more fears and worries. But I can, can say that, you know, just as an individual living here, mother, sister, brother, check the box of community member, there's concerns with just how to stay safe. I think I would reflect back to when we first had to leave that dais up there. It was a matter of not knowing how long, but what will we do? How could we keep people safe? And just remind everyone, we're in it together. We beat that up tremendously, letting people know that, but we really need the community to know that in order for me to stay safe, you got to stay safe. We got to keep each other safe, and that goes for everyone out there, and so all the way down to our students. Making sure that we can get back and do what we're in the business of doing and try to get people off the mindset of that previous thing that we had to do. If we can stay together, let's figure out how to do it, because we are definitely better together.
Thank you. Thank you. Discussion on the beginning of school?
I think overall, considering this, you know, I've been doing it for a long time. I think things have gone well. There's been some challenges here and there, but I think for the coming into the district and being new to the district, they've done an overall good job prior to me arriving. They had a lot of good systems in place. So I think that as I came on board in June, they really had a lot of good things already in place, so. Smooth, and then I think we all anticipated, went very smooth. And obviously, there's hiccups anytime you're moving the work of a district of this size. But overall, talking to the superintendents who are in the superintendent network that I'm in, there's about, it seems like they feel like we've done a really good job across the board, and we have. But again, I think we've had some hiccups, but we've narrowed it down to three or four priorities. So, but the one thing, we talked about it again today, is we've responded very quickly, very swiftly, and we have been able to address the issues and concerns that have come up right away. Can't solve a lot of them in terms of like, you know, a few things here and there, but we definitely do the best we can.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. So I, I got to be in my district first day of school, and I just was so happy to see all those joyous faces of the kids, being able to see, be in class together. So it was a great beginning in my district, so yeah, we're, I think we're all happy. But we're also, you know, we have some trepidations about school starting too, but at least we're open, right? That's a good. What I want to accomplish today is to again go over our governance norms and our team protocols. So we'll be starting with the first document that says governance norms. We worked on this last workshop, and we did a lot of, and thanks to Ginger for making it look pretty and putting it together for me, we're going to go through each bullet, make sure we still have agreement on these norms, and then we'll go to the protocols. So starting with the first, my glasses keep fogging up, sorry. First bullet, keep learning and achievement for all students as the primary focus. Any discussion on that? Do we have agreement on that first bullet? Abigail?
I'm sorry. Dr. Flores?
No, go ahead, Abby. Okay. I would like to add safety.
That was my comment as well.
Keep learning, keep safety, learning, and achievement for us as our primary focus.
I would add to the safety part, though. It's, it's not just students, because we're not a business just of students. We have many employees as well. So how could it be written within, when it comes to achievement and learning, of course, the priority is our students, and we want to focus, primary focus on that. But yet, there has to be an inclusive language that makes sure that safety pertaining to within the district, you know, is, is being adhered as well.
Well, I know that everyone gets professional development, so all the adults do learning as well. And our achievement, you know, everybody together, working for our kids' achievement. I don't know how we word it, but, but I understand what you're saying, Abigail, because I agree with you wholeheartedly that include our employees.
So I have a thought on that point. One thing that you might consider doing is break that out as a separate option.
That's what I was just saying.
In other words, the creation of a safe environment for all students, staff, teachers, that's really kind of a separate program, a separate component aside from the learning and achievement, so.
So we can add a bullet?
Yeah.
Is that okay, Abigail? Thank you for bringing that up.
I would add that one first. That would be the first one.
The first bullet?
Yeah.
Is that if, if we don't have safe schools, then we're not going to have any schools for students to come to, meaning we're going to have to close down. So at the end, yeah.
Yeah, and I would, I would add to that. This was asked, you know, that even prior to COVID, safety has earned, you know, in our city and our district, so regardless of its COVID era or not, safety still has to be a primary concern.
Yes.
Didn't hear you. Could you put your mic on?
I'm sorry. I was just saying, I didn't know if you were looking for a consensus.
Yes, ma'am.
I know we do, we beat one, but I, I agree with Abigail's recommendation and father's support.
And Abigail, so keep a safe environment for staff, students, and?
Well, all employees within.
Okay.
And it's, it's hard to say employees, though, because we have, we have parents, we have guardians, and so we have a whole community. I guess I'm wondering, within school boundaries, would that be it? Would that be too much?
Say that again, Abigail. What did you call it?
Within school boundaries, would that be too much? Because we have families that also are in our schools and.
And, and you're right.
Stakeholders, but we want to be maybe intimate. I don't, you know, how we can be inclusive, what we're, we're looking for?
For all stakeholders.
Stakeholders, all educational stakeholders.
Okay.
It's, I mean, I agree with stakeholders, but it sounds so dry.
And that's why I was saying, do we want to kind of calm them out?
I would like to put, it's humanizer. Yeah, because I'm just, Abby.
Yeah, no, I agree. I just, just don't want to leave anyone, so we got to make sure we get, we name them properly, you know, staff, students, parents.
Can say students, teachers, staff, administrators.
Volunteers.
Volunteers, and community, community.
Volunteers.
Volunteers.
Community members.
And other, community members and other stakeholders, yeah.
But that's within our school sites, because I mean, it's.
Unity of our.
Unified, right?
Yeah, yeah, within our school sites, so that way, like if they're across the street, although that would be great, we want to make sure there's safety too, but it doesn't fall within our school sites.
This is the community.
Yes. Yeah, so school sites, all, you're right, you're right, we do. District facilities and sites.
Yeah, so this is good feedback, and what Terry is going to do is, based on this feedback, I think she'll come back at a subsequent time.
Yes.
To share with you some revised protocols.
Revised norms, yes.
I think we only have an hour and a half today, and.
Yeah.
We want to get through as much as we can.
Welcome, Myra. Nice to see you. All right. Okay, thank you for that feedback. I will incorporate that into the, into a separate first bullet, and like I said, you'll get this information back, and you can edit if I didn't create what you wanted. Thank you. So let's go to the second bullet, recognize and respect differences of perspective and style on the board and amongst staff, students, parents, and the community. Does that capture everyone? All right, so number three, act with dignity and understand the implications of demeanor and behavior.
I agree with it. I just want, I'm an editor. You shouldn't put a comma after dignity. Sorry. I'm an English teacher.
Okay.
To me, you know, I just, I want to add that this norm here, with it says implication of demeanor and behavior, almost says that our demeanor isn't appropriate. That's, that's kind of how I feel when I read that, is like, there's implications of our demeanor and behavior, and do we need to be reminded of that? I don't know, that's just me. Understand implications. It almost insinuates that behavior, and that that's going to happen. But when I read it, that's just tiny impression I get. It's almost like a slam on us, in my opinion.
We could say act with dignity and understanding towards each other and respect.
Understand what? Dr. Flores?
Act with dignity, respect, and understanding towards each other.
Or demeanor does cover whatever you may be referring to, without, without repeating behavior as though it's a scolding.
Yeah, and I'm glad you mentioned something similar to what is a norm of behavior. So it can be for one certain groups, it may be a certain way and another, a different way. I don't know. So it's just, I'm glad you made that suggestion.
Yeah, and a lot of, I kind of discussed this with, you know, people are always looking up to us as a board of education, right? They're looking to our leadership styles. The student board members are watching us during our meetings, so it's just a matter, there's cultural differences.
Right, and so what's a norm? Is it a traditional, like the white male of the past norm of doing meetings? Or is this something where different cultures have different ways of communicating? So I just want to make sure that it's a norm. Not necessarily it's a norm for everyone.
There is difference. And I could add, while understanding cultural differences, if you'd like to do.
No, I think how it was framed is fine. How it was, to, you know, what we consider the demeanor and behavior.
The norm.
Yeah.
I agree with Scott, with Dr. Wyatt. It implies that we're not behaving well, and that's not a norm. A norm is expectation to act with dignity, respect, and understanding toward each other.
And remember, this is, it's really not a reflection on the board, you know, as it is now, but this, this is going to go in your, which is an onboarding tool for future boards. So it's just that understanding and expectation of behavior. So I'll add those words, Dr. Flores, that you wanted.
What if we were to do something like this, a little bit, to say, model good behavior, demeanor, and respect? I can't read my own writing. So model good behavior and respect towards others at all time, so that it's an aspiration. It's not a, remember, bad behavior reflects poorly on you. It's more, this is what we aspire to be. We aspire to model good behavior, dignity, and respect.
And it's inclusive by saying others.
Others.
Well, I, I think it says act. Act is even stronger.
Yeah.
Act, not model, but act. It's our actions.
Okay.
We can word smith that a little.
I will. I will definitely. And David, did you have something to add to number three that you wanted to discuss?
Terry?
Yes.
So we will, before we add the draft.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
We can word smith if.
Yes, ma'am. If I don't have the content, right. Yes, ma'am.
So, yeah, one of, one of the tasks that I was given was to take a look at recent board meetings. And I'll tell you why. Now more than ever, the audience for board meetings is a lot broader. A lot of folks that didn't participate are able to do so now because of this online format. So there are more eyes on you and on every school board, especially these days with some of the things happening, than ever before. And so, first of all, I want to say it speaks to all of you that you're willing to take extra time out of your busy schedules, in addition to your board member duties, to come sit through a training, and that really speaks well of you. And your meetings are viewed by folks all over, believe it or not. A lot of your consultants work statewide, and they're used to seeing board meetings. And so a couple of them suggested, you might want to take a look at some things that are happening, and there's some, there's some areas certainly of improvement that we. There's a couple of specific things they wanted to talk about in this, in this context. One of those has to do with public comment, and there's an inclination, and I understand the inclination, because typically, board members are educators at heart, and as board members, you want to be helpful. I mean, if somebody comes up and says something, you want to help them. And the problem with that is if take, what I saw in a couple of meetings, is we would have somebody at public comment, and that item would then turn into almost a full-blown agenda item, under the guise of, well, we're trying to help you, you know, ourselves understand what the issue is. And the problem with that, talking about is very important. And if there's nothing on the agenda, you know, folks, when they decide what meetings they're going to attend or not, they will look at that agenda to see if there's something on there that they want to be a part of. And if you have that conversation, and you go into that level of detail on an item that's not on your agenda, it really precludes the public from being able to meaningfully participate, understand. There may be that one person that's making that comment, fifty people in the background who would want to weigh in on that, and they've been deprived of the opportunity because that wasn't agendized. So there's a, just a couple of things like that that we noticed. There's, appears to be a lot of sidebars happening during the meeting while other board members have the floor. The issue with that is it telegraphs to the public whether, and I know you don't think this way, but how it comes across is that whoever's speaking, what they have to say is not that important, and we don't want to do each other as members of the board. So when someone has the floor, we want to make sure we're paying rapt attention and not having another thing like that. I know some of this sounds nitpicky, but collectively, it makes a difference. It makes a difference, and it goes to that behavior, modeling that demeanor for everybody that's watching, because there are more eyes on you than ever before. And so you have the opportunity to really take it to the next level. There are a couple others. We can get into some, those are just kind of some things that I, that I noticed in looking at some of the meetings, yes.
So what is your recommendation?
So my recommendation would be, first of all, having this training is an important part of that, able to understand those issues, being able to discuss them, being able to arrive at some conclusion. And our, our hope is that we build capacity and confidence in these board members, that you're able to then, when you see these kinds of, kind of help steer folks into.
There's a fine line.
Yes.
When someone comes up, and they're our, our parents or constituents, and when someone doesn't say anything to them, that's a brush-off. That's a brush-off.
Yeah.
So I, as a board member, don't appreciate that. So I will raise my hand to clarify, to acknowledge that we heard that person.
And that's appropriate.
And, and to, and if I didn't understand, please restate it. And, and that's important. That's very important. And our president does a good job of handling that, and she'll say we're moving in too much. I know that on occasion, you know, overly excited, which we do, if it's a hot topic issue.
And that's what I'm referring to. I'm not referring to the run of the mill.
And so, so when I was president, I would say, okay, does everybody agree to him for the next? him for the next, the next, you know, meeting? Because I would say we're moving into, you know, muddy waters. So let's, we recognize this is an important issue. Let's agendize it for next did that as president. And so, I mean, there are hot topics in the day. And, and usually either Gwen or Mr. Irvin will address. And I sometimes send them a note. You need to, you know, you need to address this, you know? You just can't, can't, you know, just not do it, you know? Don't let that person go off because they're stewing.
And sometimes contact them, you know, in the audience.
You know, I think we're good at saying, you know, please go over and give your name to so-and-so.
Yeah, that's a great practice.
My secretary or whatever, or go see, you know, Ms. Applegate or Mr. Dr. Marcus or, you know, Dr. Francis. Like, we need to have some kind of protocol that we follow.
That's right. We never want anybody to walk away feeling
Yeah.
And so sometimes you, you ask a question because you don't understand what they're saying. You want to make sure, for the record, their comment is clear. Where we get into trouble is when we then enter into a dialogue and we have a substantive discussion. And sometimes in some boards will say, we probably even have it at the beginning of public comment. Please don't take it the wrong way. If we don't engage in a lengthy conversation, you know, the Brown Act prohibits us from making anything more than a general inquiry into an item that's not on we may direct staff to follow up with you. We may request that the item be brought up for a subsequent meeting. And that's precisely because-
That would be Gwen's responsibility, correct?
Yeah, it's the board president. A part of what the board president would do.
And I like that added because we even, we've added more language that's said right before public comments. And so there's no, I don't think there's no standard. We know we have to put in there about the governor's extension and all. I think adding something like that is also good.
But also when we get out of hand, we could say, I got to stop you because we're going to be violating whatever, the Brown Act.
Yeah.
But we can agendize, you have consensus to agenda.
We had a pretty good one. Like you said, hot topic at our last meeting and we kind of, you know, on the mask is just tough if you want to talk about it. But, you know, we didn't, we didn't seek to agendize it because the district had our, we've already have.
And that was one of the hardest things as a new board member. You know, when the public is making their comment and you're like, you know, you just want to respond. But, yeah, I think that's really important that the board president all for that. And also on your agenda, do you have a place for future agenda items? Where you can bring up, okay, on our agenda, and I'll send Doc a copy of it. At the end of our board meetings, it says items where we can bring up different things that we'd like to-
So Terry, you did in our board retreat, we talked about that and agreed that we did like that. And that's one of the outcomes of this? So that we can have that there.
We used to have it. We, before COVID, we, we
We had the top.
We had an ongoing future and we would vote on which ones to prioritize.
Okay, perfect. That's a good way to get things answered to and on the agenda.
That's a very good practice. Most of my boards do that.
And with regards to maybe a standard protocol for all presidents and moving forward, because I know Scott's going to be one next, next cycle as well, is how do we make sure that it's a part of maybe written or something where if you want to then kind of the president needs to, you know, be ahead of the game in making sure that they acknowledge, and you always do a good job with acknowledging. But I think there's a disconnect between who's going to refer to who's going to speak. And I mean, not speak, who's going to call and I think when there is that disconnect, then of course, some of us are going to jump in to try to get, get into it. So if we can have that natural protocol
Okay.
for them to do that.
Perfect.
And if I can make a comment, you know, and I do a lot of speaking at board of supervisors, city council. I don't want any comments behind my comment. And I, sometimes I tell them, I don't need a comment, I just want you to hear me. And, you know, and then I know, and I may not know how to take it to the next step. My concern, and even when I was president, and I shared with the board often, one day we're going to get sued because because sometimes we say things speaker
Yes.
helps on the way. And help, help may be impossible. And I don't think, you know, we should do that. I don't think, I, I hear that we don't ignore them. And I agree with you, Dr. Flores. I think it's important they know that we can get back. And maybe that could be put in the instructions you give. But when it says public comment, five minutes. And sometime it goes 15 to 20 minutes. That sends another message to people who are listening, you know, on because I've had a couple of people say, I stopped looking because I'm tired of listening to the same people over and over and over again.
Yeah. And Dr. Hill, you bring up a good example. You know, if as an individual you say help is on the way, you really don't have that authority, right? It has to be a decision from the whole board. So thank you. Thank you for bringing that up.
Well, and, and related to that, it then really puts you in a position a de facto staff member. Now you've taken on that problem for yourself when really the most effective thing to do is refer that to the superintendent or the appropriate cabinet member. They work for you. They're there to handle those situations. You become that person, you're going to get all kinds of emails and calls and you may get out in front of what your board members are comfortable with or what staff is comfortable with. So it's really important, and I think there's a norm in here that talks about that. Trying to step out of that role is, is becoming kind of a de facto staff member. I, I understand why we do it. Right? Because we want to be helpful. We want to help everyone. But I would submit that the most effective help we can give them is to refer them to the appropriate superintendent or cabinet member.
And that has been the case in previous times as well, before COVID, where we would direct them to the secretary. So they can contact, because it may be a comment that we just didn't understand clearly. It's just clarifying and that's just like
Thank you. Great conversation. Thank you, guys. It's always good to get clarity, right? And understand the procedure. We'll go to the next bullet. It's pretty self-evident. Keep confidential matters confidential. Any comments, questions, reflections on that bullet? Okay. Going down to the next one. Participate in professional development and commit the time and energy necessary to be informed and effective. So that's what we're doing tonight. Thank you, I appreciate it. You guys are strengthening your governance team, which is very important, especially in times of these when governance teams are under a lot of pressure with hard decisions that you're making. So any reflections, questions, comments on that?
On that, that one, Terry, should we add ongoing?
Okay. Participate in ongoing professional development?
Ongoing, annual, whatever.
Okay.
We do have CSBA
Regular.
annually as well. And there's other conferences or summits that we do participate.
Perfect. Yes, yes, thank you. That's great. Okay, any other comments, questions? All right. We'll go down to the next one. Understand the distinctions between board and staff roles and refrain from performing management functions that are the responsibility of the superintendent and staff. A little bit a couple of minutes ago. And, you know, really important, but, you know, as board members, we get on board, boards because we're doers. We want to help. I always assume good intentions, but sometimes it's really confusing for staff of our role as board members. So David, do you have anything to add to that one?
We want to word that a little bit differently. I think it kind of has the same issues as the dignity one that we talked about. But, but other than that, I think conceptually, it's right on the money. And like I said, I know we all want to be helpful, but sometimes you know, the left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing. And that does a disservice to that member of the you need to get them to the person that can help them the most expeditiously. So it's really, it's there to protect you, it's there to protect staff, and it's there to protect the public.
I always describe it as we are the what as board members and staff is the how.
But of course, as board members, if we see that things of the, of, you know, sending it to whoever needs to deal with it, right? We're not going to get involved and we see no action. Then I know it's not our job, but we just have to hold individuals accountable as well.
Conversation you then have with the superintendent.
So did we put this in here?
We were, we talked about this at our last workshop. We can strike it too if you don't.
Because I know that, we know that we direct Mr. Irvin and that we don't, I mean, that's not our function. We're the policymakers, so
Exactly.
it kind of implies that we, we need to do, I mean, that we are doing it. Because it says refrain. It's like, you know?
Okay, I'll change that. I'll take out
We definitely know that well, at least I know. I think all of us know that we're, we're, it's not our privy to tell staff what to do.
Exactly. And remember, this is an onboarding boards. So new board members can get kind of an understanding of their roles and responsibilities through these norms.
There are times when we're in conversation where, like in our policy where we will direct our, I mean, they're asking us questions and we are responding to them. No, that's not what we would do. You know, in terms of, so in that sense, we are directing them. Leading policy. So
At the helicopter view. So we, I always like to describe it that as board members, we have that helicopter policy.
What's the fine line, you know? Because we are all engaged. Margaret and I are on the policy committee. And we do discuss things. No, we don't want that in there. We, we want you to do this. We want you to look this up. And we are directing them.
Yeah, it's a responsibility of a board member to create policy. So you're very much in your lane creating policy. Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Flores, you aren't talking about striking the whole thing, like understanding the distinction between board and staff roles. What part were you talking about striking out?
The refrain.
You refrain, refrain from performing?
Yeah.
But we do that.
Pardon me?
I said, but we do that.
We don't? What do you mean we do that?
We refrain from performing management functions?
Maybe a way to handle that is just take out the word management. In other words, as a board member, we refrain from doing the work of the superintendent. We don't need to quantify what that word is.
Well, again, it's an onboarding tool for future boards, for future board members. So they get the understanding of what the role and responsibility is.
We have, we have a board policy now that speaks to that. So it's, it's not inconsistent with that. I, I think we, I agree. I think we can wordsmith it a little bit and bring it back to you.
And if we do, and I'm, I'm okay with when you change is that maybe add within that language that if the issue arises, then the board has you know, can hold individuals accountable for things not, so that way it kind of for the new, new board members that come on board so that they have no say in if there's a case that they refer to this district and it's not being held accordingly so that we can hold the person responsible.
And that is part of our job as a board member? People accountable.
But that way we can add the language within that last sentence if it's possible. So that way, if we keep that refrain or maybe use another verb with that sentence just ended with, then if issues arise.
Okay.
They, you could say, understand the distinctions between board and staff and responsibilities that pertain to the superintendent and staff.
Nice to have an English teacher here. Thank you.
Actually a professor.
All right, thank you. Going to the next bullet. Understand that authority rests with the board as a whole and not with individuals. That's a hard one, right? Just get elected, making that transition from I to we, from an individual to the team. It's, it's hard sometimes because we're all pretty much type A personalities, used to making things happen. But now we have work of the governance team, which can be a hard transition sometimes.
The thing is that it's not even all the board. We can have a four out of seven. So it's not the whole board that can make the decision. It could be just a consensus of having four board members.
But is made, then the governance team supports it, right?
Right, of course. What I'm saying is that understand, wait, understand the authority rests on the board as a whole and not as an individual, kind of disqualifies the individual. So I'm not making that whole sentence, honestly, but I get what you're trying to say. I just want to make sure that the reality is, is that it doesn't even have the say of the whole board. It can just be four board members.
And that's a board policy, 9200 it's in your board bylaws that, that sentence is in your board bylaws? But I understand what you're saying now, Miguel. I understand that, you know, it could be a four, three vote, right? And it wasn't a decision of the whole board. It wasn't a vote of the whole board. But then you support it as a team.
Does it say a majority of the board?
That's what I was going to recommend, majority.
Understand that authority rests with the majority of the board and not with individuals.
Thank you. Okay. Any other reflections on that one? David, did you have anything to add on that?
Again, I think that goes back to that point of avoiding that trap of overpromising in maybe getting out in front of the board as a unit, right? The board acts by the majority of the board and we want to avoid issues where we may be, I know we all have one-on-ones with our constituents and they're but we have to be careful in terms of how far that commitment goes. Because again, we, we act as the majority of the board. So I think it's just important to keep in mind.
All right.
Is this where we put a norm that when we have that community members bring up or employees that I refer them directly to Mr. Irvin?
And that, those are-
And so, or, or, you know, we have spoken policy where we also text with him, along with him, the assistant superintendent that handles it.
And so we'll address that under a protocol?
Under protocol?
Yes, yes, ma'am. But thank you for bringing it up. Note here that we'll have a good conversation about that one.
Because we are a big district.
Yes, you are.
And we're very visible in our community. And they trust us.
Yes. The things I learned when I was a new board member was even having a conversation in the grocery store, right? You're listening to an individual and their concern or what they're talking about. And you're shaking your head yes. And pretty soon that individual goes maybe a staff member and says, hey, board member V-Hill totally agreed with everything I said. And even though it was just a conversation, it was my body language that showed that, right? And just being careful and about that. All right. One is respectfully listening to the ideas of others. I think, you know, you're a seven-member board. I'm a five-member board. Really listening to the perspective and the ideas of your other board members. You know, when I was a new board member, I used to take my agenda and kind of write in the margin, yes or no, how I was going to vote on each issue. And one of my board members, a tenured board member, said, you know what, Terry? Don't meetings with the open mind and listen to the perspectives of your other board members. And I stopped doing that. And a lot of times I've changed my mind by listening to the perspective of my other board members. Dr. Flores?
We also, it's not on in the past have agreed- We also, uh, it's not on, in the past have agreed to disagree respectfully. And that's a norm that we, I think all of us have. Do you guys agree?
It's in the protocols as well. Yeah.
Why isn't it a norm?
Add it to that, to the second piece. Okay.
Sorry. Although that kind of relates to the second norm. Respecting the, the differences of perspective and style on the board. Kind of already embodied in that, but we can call it out more specifically if you'd like.
Yeah, I would like to add it.
Okay.
All right. Um, come to meetings prepared.
Oh, Terry, sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay. Just on that, um, it kind of goes back to what Dave was talking about earlier. And I've been guilty of this, so I'll use myself as an example of having a sidebar. And I've always talked about active listening.
Yes.
You know, that we're, we're actually engaged and active with what the person's saying. My recommendation would be respectfully and actively listen to the ideas of others. And then that kind of encourages to make sure we're on task, not just respecting them, but listening to them as well.
Yeah, I think, um, one of the norms that I've heard before, listening to understand and not to respond. That kind of encapsulates, I think, what you just said. Okay. Any other reflections or comments or questions? Far? Um, again, come to meetings prepared and on time. Be collectively responsible for the success of our meetings, right? It's everyone's, each member's responsibility to make a successful meeting, um, to get things accomplished that you need to do for the district. Any comments or questions on that? David, do you have anything to add to that one?
You know, in looking through some of the meetings, I noticed there's a lot of folks getting up and milling about during the meeting. And I know this is not the intent, but as the impartial viewer, and again, that goes back that your meetings are now being seen by more and more eyes. It gives the impression that while you're doing this, you're, you're, you're not caring about what your colleague has to say. And I know that's probably not the intent. Um, one I had, and I know your meetings tend to run very long. You may want to consider just plugging in a time to, to take a recess. Cause I, I know I get tired of sitting down through long board meetings myself. And if there's a way that you can kind of standpoint, build in some time where folks can get in and stretch. It, uh, might come across a little better. It doesn't look as if we're turning our back on somebody while they're speaking or just, it gives an impression that I don't even think you intend some, half the time, so.
And it's hard to do when you, you need to go to the ladies' room or you need to-
Exactly.
And, and we're get some water, get some coffee because of this long meetings.
We need to be building in some recesses, cause you guys go very late.
I was going to comment on that too. To the bathroom. I can't be there for five hours without getting up. I mean, I can't. And, and when I finish my water, I want some more water, you know? So, I mean, when do you do it? I try to strategically, you know, not to be rude.
You try to do it when, when not all board members are, you try to like, okay, I can probably go now.
In the past, I've, I've, we've had on the agenda where we had a, a five to 10-minute break. So maybe that's something to consider. If that's something the board-
It's knowledgeable, we only have one bathroom though.
We only have one bathroom.
There's only one bathroom?
We don't have a board member restroom?
Only one. And it's male, female, a uni, a uni one. So that's why we're getting up one at a time.
Got it, got it.
Not just seven, there's staff.
Exactly. Okay. So, um, I think that's a good idea to do.
Just to bring a little bit of honesty for myself, if it's a vote that's important enough and I gotta go talk to somebody to get them switched, I'll do it.
So we decided we're going to add some breaks in. Um, David, did you have anything else to add to that piece? No? Okay. Yeah, yeah. Just process, right? Just process. So this one seems a little negative. I think maybe we can, uh, scratch the avoid hidden agendas. Communicate openly and honestly with each other.
Now, my only concern with that is that we cannot, unfortunately, during open session, even closed session, um, you know, that's the only time. But if it's not agendized, then we can't have the conversation and we can't speak, um, uh, more than a certain amount of individuals. So really, how can we, um, I mean, with everyone, to each board member, I guess it's depending. On situation. But I get, I get, I get the communicate openly and honestly.
Yeah, and I think that's referring to in our meetings, right? To have our, our conversation, to be open and honest.
Okay.
Yeah, this certainly isn't meant to encourage violating the Brown Act.
That's what I'm referring to, is that we can't.
Right. So in those permissible communications, make sure that they're open and honest, I guess is another.
So you're going to delete, avoid hidden agendas?
I would.
Yeah, I, I think going back to the other two bullets that we talked about, that negativity, that we could take that out.
Cause it's negative.
Yeah, if that's-
I don't like it.
Okay. All right.
And then also, if I can.
Yes.
So I'm, you know, listening to everything that's being said. Mr. Tillman, I would appreciate it if you did not do that. If, um, something needs to be discussed, I would like to participate in the discussion. And if it's an item that's going to be voted on or something, maybe we can all discuss it. I personally respect, so I would appreciate to be involved in the conversation.
I was just doing it to be open and honest. I just wanted to be real. Sometimes when I'm up and talking to somebody, if it's important enough with you, Dr. Flores, and say something to her, then my sway here for an important vote that's going to impact our kids, I don't have a problem doing it. Now, I, you may feel that's disrespectful to you, but it's politics. We're politicians. For me, politics is a piece of shit affair. So a lot of these niceties you guys want aren't going to happen. Hidden agendas, to say that in politics is not hidden agendas, that doesn't make any sense to me. But, but I told myself I wasn't going to say a whole lot today. I'll be do your list of how to be a perfect board member, but I'm just trying to give a little bit of honesty to it.
And I appreciate the honesty. But again, you know, I know this is more of a political position for, maybe for you politician. I didn't get here on the board with the mindset of being a politician and maybe this now makes me a politician.
It does.
It does.
I still have, uh, to grow, I guess, into that position. But for me, the most important thing is decisions for children, allowing everybody at the table. If we're here at the table, we all deserve the space to be at the table. We, we all engaged in, you know, running for the position and so forth. So I would appreciate to be part of the conversation.
That took a lot of courage to bring that up. I appreciate you mentioning that. And Board Member Tillman, you know, what I would say is, by engaging in that conduct, what you're doing is you're pushing aside transparency. It really cert, you know, it deprives the members of the public, it deprives your fellow board members from being an active participant in an item that presumably is on the agenda that night. So there, if it's coming up, then there's and, and maybe the time to have those sidebars would be prior to showing up at, at the meeting. I, you know, I don't want to tell you how to be a board member. You've been a board member longer than I have. But I will tell you that it leaves the viewer with the impression is something going on and it deprives the members of the public from the opportunity to hear that very important item that you're discussing, right? It's on the agenda for a reason because members of the public have a right that conversation, as do your colleagues on the board. So that's, that's all I would say to that.
And, and if I could just chime in, if I could chime in. I'm sorry. If I could chime in, and I just want to say, I hear what you're saying, but you don't talk to all of us. So people at home looking at it, they see you talking to the same two and three people. And the message, you know, that's going on is, I don't So I, again, that message that we send to the public is so important. You know, so what Myra was saying is, is correct. And if it's something that you want to get over, I encourage because it's seven people, there's seven people, discuss it with all of us. And you pretty much know who's going to support and who's not going to support. But, um, but I just encourage you to keep that transparency there and just share, you know, with everybody. Cause you might say something, even I can say, you know, Dan is right for once.
See, she's not being nice, see? Something should happen. Now, hey, I, I just offer something, a little bit of honesty. And that's the reason why I don't really like to participate in these things because when you're open and honest about stuff, then people, you know, get upset about it. Here, not said anything, go through the end. I just offered some, uh, a, a real perspective. And what you're all saying is true, but in the end, the public is the judge. They can see me doing whatever I'm doing at a board meeting and they'll decide whether, when it comes time to vote, whether they vote me in or not. There's a whole lot of folks that aren't here that ran for election, that didn't get elected. And you're right, everything that they do is accounted for by the voters. And based on that, people decide who they're going to vote for to be in the to do what they want for their students and their kids and their family members and their grandpa, their grandkids. I know what it's all about, okay? So, and I, I agree, everybody doesn't see it the same way. And I, Dr. Hill hit it on the head. Uh, some may say, well, he don't talk to that person, so and I, that might be the mess I want to send. Maybe I don't want that person to get reelected. Maybe that's, maybe that's a good thing. But I'm just being real about it. In, in terms of, uh, uh, being on the board, it is a political position. And, and I have a lot of respect for political, political Appleman. She may see herself as like this nice, meek, non-political person. I don't see it that way. I think she's very sophisticated. You know, she wouldn't have got elected. And to think that everybody doesn't have conversations with others that they don't do to everybody, I think is being disingenuine. No one on this board has the same conversation with each board member. It doesn't happen. So to pretend like you got people who talk to everybody about everything they talk to another board member about, it's just, I don't know, I just, to me, it's not realistic, right? So I know my problem is I'm too practical, right? And I want to try to restrain from making comments. Only made one, and that's what you guys are talking about, but thank you.
But it's only fair and, and I, I know before we had talked about having our retreats and all of these things, prior to even having a superintendent here. And I think it, the fairness of it, Mr. Tillman, cause you've talked to me and I don't want to just make this a dialogue about Mr. Tillman. But it's about the governance. Done something for a long time, right? But Myra, again, as I said, a brand new, I would never tell her to, to do something that I maybe gotten away with. Maybe that's a bad word, but what I'm saying is, I want her to know the right way. And when I came to this board, I had to, I I'm a delegate still right now that's probably sat more, through more Brown Acts than I want to. But I'm a very legalized person. I, I will tell a person, you can't make me get in trouble. If I get in trouble, I want to do it on my own. So the purpose to, not to, to get into, okay, you, you, you. But again, it's only fair to start out with what the rules. And I don't think any board member that was on here, uh, Dr. Flores was here when I got here, Abigail was here. They never came to me and told me to, you know, this, you can do this. I listened and then I went and took up and sat in meetings like this. And that's all we're saying. There's some things that we know, but we still got to be fair and let them know what the rules are. Because when it comes down to it, or for example, those board members they talked about before you came in, but you all got on the mic and did something dumb. You know, you don't deserve to be a board member. So when you know better, you know better. And that's, that's really what I want us to perceive this as, is that and I think Dr. Hill said it earlier, too, the decisions that, they come at us as a board, too. They don't always come at the individual for doing anything. Maybe you'll get to that. But I'm always watching others to say, I, cause I don't want to lose my home or lose my car or my livelihood because somebody made a decision, because they were careless. So when we know, we know. And that's how I perceive the Brown Act. It's there for a reason. And some people have gotten in trouble and we just don't want to do that if we can avoid it.
So I just want to add, I do want to thank Mr. Tillman for being honest and interjecting that. And I'm not here to pick on anybody. We appreciate that honesty. I think it leads to good conversations. And these are, this is the season of having difficult conversations, right?
Yes, it is.
And, and you know what? You're right. As a board member, and you haven't heard this part, but I'm also a board member. As board members, we do have conversations. All I'm saying is, maybe don't have them during the meeting when you're on camera, when everybody else is happening. You can talk to your constituents, uh, in your office or however, you know, on the phone, you can text. It's just the time, place, manner, right? I think you want to avoid certain impressions. And, and I think you can have your cake and eat it too. I think you can have those meetings. But just maybe not while the meeting's happening, maybe not while one of your board members has the floor. That's all.
Yeah. And I, is there a way, before, when was it, either last year or two years ago, they would board that's speaking, cause that would also give me an opportunity, well, oh, that one board is speaking. I can grab some snacks, put it in my mouth and I won't be so noticeable. So I don't know if they can do that again, because that is, uh, I know we used to do that. They don't do that anymore. Communications team, if that's possible.
And one of the things I wanted to add, thank you for that, Abigail, because we, your meetings go a long time. You get hungry, right? But one thing I wanted to add to and, and maybe talk about is the public deliberations, right? They like to know how you make a decision or hear the conversations between board members. So a lot of times we have those conversations to educate our stakeholders and kind of let them look at us and decisions. So that could be a piece of it too.
And, and the public is very suspicious. Right? How many times have we heard, oh, the fix is already in? I can't tell you how many times I've heard that.
Rubber stamp.
Rubber stamp, all that kind of stuff. Give them any ammunition like that? We don't need to. We, we can get there, uh, we can get there a different way. We can still get to where we're going, right? Appearances matter, especially now. I'll say, I've said it once, I'll say it again. There are many more now than there have ever been. Because of how we're conducting our meetings. There's a wider audience. We're just, we've got to model the right way to do things. And I know, I know you want to be the best that you can be. We all do.
All right. Any other reflections, reflections?
Yeah, so just, just on that note, um, I also want to say thank you for your honesty. Because quite frankly, look, the reality is, I don't shy away from difficult conversations, in private or in public. And we try to come from a, from a, you know, best intention. Maybe you're on the other spectrum than I am. Maybe I'm more of a, more of a dreamer, more of a, yeah. We can do things and, you know, we can do them in this way. Like you said, maybe um, more realist, right? And, and that's fine. Again, I'm always going to say what's on my mind. And I'm always going to be honest about how I feel about things, because I feel, right? Can't separate that. And so, um, as long as we know that and we understand that, that, that if there's ever something that happens in a public meeting that I feel a certain way about, then I'm going to bring it up, right? With the intention to offend or so forth. So just as long as, I guess, we're clear on that. If, if that is happening, for example, where you, Mr. Tillman, are conversing with someone, see that board president is not addressing it, then I might, right? Hopefully I don't have to do that, because that's not my place or my position. But I, like I said, I also want to be respected in the space. So, um-
Well, I think Myra, that goes all of us are responsible for the success of the meetings, right? So thank you for bringing that up. Dr. Flores?
Well, that's why I added, we have to agree to disagree. And it's our board president's responsibility to do a good job to ask, is our- to do a good job, to ask, is, are there any other comments? You know, are there any other, I mean, sometimes I ask, Mr. Tillman, can you please clarify what you meant by that? You know? And, and then if I still don't understand it, what did you mean? Because I didn't, because I don't think you guys know that I'm hard of hearing. And I'm going to go get hearing aids pretty soon. And so sometimes, like, and I don't know if you've noticed, can you speak up? I ask people to speak up because they're saying. And so, I may get up to go, you know, ask, what did you mean? What did you, did you mean this? Did you mean that? That's all, just to clarify. But the conversation has moved on. And so, and then times in the past where they're able to say, you didn't hear me. Yes, I did. And that's all I, that's all I said.
And that's all to say that, even if you were to do it, because I, you know, I respect your, you know, your decision to call someone out.
Right.
But it could you know what, did they mention the city? Or did, and so then, when you call us out or call Mr. Tillman out, I'll just say, well, he just asked what the city was. So it just recognize that, too.
No, 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 and that's fine. And like I said, I mean, I'm not going to be the police, right? I'm not saying, you know, and I'm going to be like, hey, stop talking. You know, but in some cases, it's, that's happening throughout the board meeting, you know? And so, that's all I'm saying, right? So I'm not saying, don't do it, you're not allowed to do it. I'm not your boss, I'm not the police. You know, I do notice it. And I, it does come across a certain way. And therefore, if I feel like it's not being addressed, which, again, you do do a great job, then that might be something that I do say. And that's
I also think, Mr. Ervin, you said you were going to put the green lights on. You haven't done it yet. We really need to have those put in, because it's really difficult for for Gwen and Scott. Sometimes I have to go, Scott. I know, and because, and then I have to, yeah, and then we have our mask on. And so, I mean, I really would appreciate that you would hurry up and do that.
Well, I can, I can only go as fast as the MNO team has already gotten that information. And they're moving forward on it. But they said hopefully by the next board meeting. But again, that takes process, it can't hope it to happen overnight.
Right. But I mean, that's also, also an impediment, you know, barrier prevents us from, you know, communicating.
So I do want to just add to what was said, that, that clarity is important for all of us, too, though. So if, when it's those type of things, we all want to hear it. But, what, was that what you said? Or was that what you meant? And so do it, I mean, we've all seen meetings, they'll restate what they said into the mic so that we all can hear. But I, I will say, I spend the majority of my meeting, and Dr. Wyatt, no watching to see who's going to speak, you know, all the time. Because we are constantly having conversations. Some of you text me, so I'm watching my phone, too. But I'm mindful of raising this thing up. Because I don't want people, I do it very strategic, so that the public is our, we kept our raised, you know, somewhat, it used to be higher than this, but it's fine that I can see if you are communicating with me. Because that goes into the disrespect, too. I've seen it before. People think we're texting about them. People think I'm on Facebook or whatever, and I'm not. I'm always responding either to a board member or to the, sometimes even the public wants clarity. They've told me, we've ran out of agenda items. I mean, you'd be surprised. People are always telling you, we can't hear on the dialogue and tell the you know, as a president, you're balancing all, and you all know, you've all been the president. But that clarity for all of us, too, is important, so we can hear that.
So, and that's fine, and then we can do that. So if we have clarity, just, just recognize that that's so no holds barred, then.
Yes. Abigail?
Regarding that, I mean, there's no, I mean, that just adds longer to our meetings. But if that's what's needed, then we'll do that in order to ensure every little comment that we could have asked someone else. We're just going to ask the whole board.
Yeah, because I and that's fine, we'll do that. But I'm, I'm hearing, you know, if a person didn't hear all of it, that's why it's being brought up, is like they want to know, too. And the other stuff, no, we're not asking you that. But if they're not clear, goes back to what Mr. Till if something is right, I think we all want to vote on it. But if we're not clear on it, then we don't, we may not know. And just for the record, to say again, it's very difficult. We, when you get ready to talk to someone outside of this place, you, you already got to count yourself. You know, and if somebody else has called you about something, that's very important to know. You only got one more person that maybe you can get some clarity. So we need to make sure to understand that. So sometimes, you have to be mindful of not, if you don't want to rotate the same person, but that's a hey, so somebody called me today, I was like, okay, I can only call. You know, we're always like that. So that's, you know, again, knowing the Brown Act, because it's a very easy thing. Well, I want to go, I want to call Dr. Flores, because she'd been here when it happened. And you think you're getting a clarification, but once you talk to her, so.
And I think the important part of this conversation that you're having is just knowing that each trustee, we're all responsible for our relationships between each other, right? It's not the superintendent's job just fix our relationships. It's our job as a board, a governance board, to fix our relationships. And really be mindful of when you say something at a meeting, what consequence does it have on your other board member? Have you put them in a difficult situation? Remember, there was one board member on my, my team, and she was retired. And she said, well, I'm going to pay for myself to go to conference, you know, to CSBA conference. Well, I was a mom, I had four little kids, I couldn't afford for that, you know? So her standing up and doing that grandstanding a little bit put me in a very difficult situation of maybe not being able to do my professional development. So I think we just need to be mindful of the situations that we put have comments, reflections.
So I want to, I wanted to say, we committed to a certain time. I know we need to get the protocols. And then we always have our overarching commitment is to our public comments, so
Right.
Just, just make that clear with you.
And I don't know that we're going to get to the protocols. Maybe we just do the norms tonight, and then we'll roll it in. But I'm going to be back next month. Okay. All right. So let, uh, let's go to the next recognize and appreciate the professional judgment of our staff and their commitment to our schools, our program, and our students. Reflections on that bullet?
As long as the judgment doesn't, doesn't impact or the student's growth and so forth.
Again, I view this as negative. Because we do respect our, our staff. Hard work, they work very, very hard. Everyone does. And it implies that we don't, you know?
And what word would you like to change? How would you like to change that?
I don't know how to change it right now. But are the board. And they do bring us, through the superintendent, their recommendations. And, you know, the majority rules, period. And so, you know, if we think or, you know, we can see ahead in terms of policy, we will give it back to them, you know? And that's our, I mean, that's our responsibility. We are the governing board. And so, um, and the superintendent is our only employee. And we will direct him, majority directs him, to do what we collectively decide as a majority. And so implies that we don't appreciate them. I, I don't know how that got in here.
I think we can change it around a little bit, maybe conduct ourselves in a manner that demonstrates appreciation for the professional judgment of our staff, blah, blah, blah. And then put something in there recognizing that at some point, we will have respectful differences, but we'll work through those or something, so that we do acknowledge the fact that it's not, it's not a blank check.
Right.
But we do respect that they're, they're, they're in it for the right reasons, they're doing the best they can and not to denigrate staff. I mean, there's got to be a balance there.
Or example, they could come and recommend, recommend stuff for us. But, you know, we see that, fiduciarily, it's long-term feasible. And that's one of our responsibilities. And so, it isn't that we're denigrating them. Uh, we're just looking ahead. And, uh, you know, uh, we know money. And that is one of our responsibilities. But it's, it appears to me that it implies that we don't appreciate them, and we do.
Yeah.
Uh, we do appreciate their their knowledge, their professionalism, et cetera.
We can tinker with that.
Yeah.
I, I hear what you're saying. I, I agree. We can, we can work with that.
Maybe I'm having a hard time, because now that you've mentioned that, Dr. Flores, maybe I was reading it wrong, but the thing is that judgment, is this, I'm trying to understand, because I know we've gotten lawsuits from professional judgments that didn't go right. We've also gotten, you know, issues with special ed, when issues didn't come right. And so, is this, how and maybe I'm just not understanding it right? That, when I hear, when I see professional judgment, we know for a fact that not everyone has had the professional judgment for our students. And that may be people, but this is more of a blanket statement?
Yeah, I, I think we're going to have to wordsmith it a little bit. Because I, I think you're right. There's, there's a difference between respecting somebody's professional judgment and denigrating them and just going along with whatever somebody says, because they, they just happen to have a degree. Right? Nobody's perfect.
Yes.
Regardless of their intentions to be perfect. And it's okay to disagree.
Hi, Mr. Tillman? Dr. Hill? Did you?
Yeah, so just a question. So these items on here, the norms, where do they come from?
So we worked on them on our last workshop. We, we went through them. We didn't get to the protocols. Time, we had a lovely workshop on equity that we started with, and it was very good. And we got to, we went through roles and responsibilities. And then we went through these norms.
So I'm just, these were a blank slate? And then you
I, I brought a template. I brought a template of, of norms.
And these are from other districts?
Um, they can be from other districts, other governance handbooks. Um, so I
Terry, isn't it really kind of a model CS so the CSBA organization?
No, I was just trying to see if maybe it's like, if you guys did it, was it tailored to us? Was it like a hint, hint thing?
No, 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 no. It's not a hint, hint thing. It's a
This is where the tailoring comes in.
Yes.
And why it's important is we're having the conversation, we're taking kind of the best practices norms, and we're trying to, we want it to meet your circumstances.
You asked my question? Okay, thank you.
Dr. Hill?
Yeah, I, my recommendation on this one, we, we put schools schools programs in our students. We put people to people and put staff, parents, community, whatever, and take out schools and our programs. Do, uh, do another bullet for that. But, and it would be good if we could specify classified and certificate. Classified, people do not always feel they get the love they deserve.
Got it.
As you steer away from judgment, input is something we might want to look at as well. Input, expertise, or something to that.
And again, it's not intended for, or to give you an impression that it's just a blank check for staff. You do have an oversight role. But I think we can balance that language a little bit.
Yeah, and I, and I, you know, the reason why we talk about this norm is just so staff know that they're appreciated with their professional judgment. Because a lot of us, you know, get on a board, we don't come from an education background. I didn't come from an education background. So like learning budget, when I was first on the board, it's like drinking water out of a fire hose. Like, those budgets are this thick, right? And so I spent a lot of time with my CBO, and she taught me a lot about school finance. So I think it's just talking about build your capacity in some areas. So, but we can balance that, David, right? I appreciate what you said. All right. Um, this one's kind of been covered a little bit. Respect and learn from differences of opinions. The piece, this isn't referring to just the governance team, but maybe it's your stakeholders. You know, looking at your L cap, your subgroups, your parents, um, different organizations. So, reflection
I think this board does that very well. I mean, we're very open to different philosophies and different meanings. I mean, that, I think we do that with a lot of respect.
Okay.
You guys think?
I think we do.
Yeah. All right. Okay, we have one more. We have um, the last bullet is work toward the future, learning from the past. And it's just kind of acknowledging what's happened in the past, but we're moving forward, you know, in our district and in our ideas and our issues and our perspectives.
I just want to say, I, I love real talk, and there was a lot of real talk tonight. I appreciate that. I'm very impressed with this group. I appreciate everyone's candor and honesty. And that's how these things develop effectively, when everybody's have and makes things better. It's a, I was very impressed tonight. I really appreciate your input.
Can, can we fill up that last one? Learning from the past, work towards the future?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Get everybody in agreement. Feel we're in agreement?
Okay, boards, so we got a portion of the, a big chunk of the work done. And I think, as Terry, Ms. Villa will be returning, we can move forward. You, did you send this in a PDF type of thing?
Yes.
So that but we can look at it again, we can pull it up. If there's something in advance, we can look at it, make some input on it, and then we'll figure out what board meeting we can add this to.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I just want to say, I appreciate you. Thank you just, thank you trustees for having me and working on this important, you know, education, professional development, and making your team stronger. So thank you so much.
And thank you both.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all. So board, we can break right now to about maybe 6:15, and then we can get, get ready. I mean, I, yeah, five minutes if you need to go to the restroom. So it is, the clock is, it will be 6:15. And then we can, uh, get, uh, open up our meeting. All right, Mr. Tillman has returned. We are all here. And now we're going to call this meeting to order. And 2.2, we are in for a delight, for a pledge of allegiance. It is Mrs. Trevina's second grade class Riley College Prep. All right, congratulations, Riley Prep. You did a wonderful job. Hope you're watching. Thank you. All right, we are now moving to 2.3, approval of the agenda. Okay, it was moved by Mr. Tillman and second, Dr. Hill. Okay, motion carried. Thank you. We are now moving to 2.4 inspirational message. And tonight, we will be hearing from Ms. Myra Sabios.
Hello, thank you, President. Um, welcome. Good evening. Today, I'm going to read to you a little phrase that I came across recently. And it's about culture. So, um, so what is simply put, it's the way we do things around here, which has been developed and learned over time. Culture determines what is acceptable or unacceptable, important or unimportant, right or wrong, workable. It encompasses all learned and shared, explicit or tacit assumptions, beliefs, knowledge, norms, and values, as well as attitudes, behavior, dress, and language. Every organization has a culture. Define it, or it will define you. has a culture. Define it, or it will define you. Cultures like soil. It helps or hinders growth, depending on its quality. An experienced gardener removes everything harmful to growth. Seeds are then planted and encouraged to grow through watering and feeding, along with removing any weeds that might choke the seeding, the seedings as they mature. So, um, that's basically the, you know, the, the gist of it, and I want to go back to, um, the phrase that really, um, captured my attention and why I wanted to share this with you all, is, uh, culture actively in your organization, or it will define you. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Sabayos, thank you so much. All right, we're now moving to 3.0, special presentation and recognitions. To my left, Dr. Wyatt, and we will go down from there. 3.1, resolution recognizing Patriot Day and National Day of Service and Remembrance on September 11th, 2021.
Thank you, Madam President, and let me just adjust it a little bit here. Okay. Whereas on September 11th, 2001, terrorists hijacked four passenger planes, crashing two into the World Trade Center, Twin Towers in New York City, one into the Pentagon, the U.S. Department of Defense headquarters in Arlington County, Virginia, and Alab, and Somerset County, Pennsylvania, 130 miles northwest of Washington, D.C., falling short of its intended target because of the heroic efforts of passengers on board. And whereas these attacks were by far the deadliest terrorist attack ever launched against the United States, killing innocent people. And whereas the greatness of America is shown brightly in the bravery of victims and the heroism of first responders who laid down their lives to save others, in the compassion of people who stepped forward to help those they had never met, and in the generosity of millions of Americans who enriched our country with kindness. And whereas by a joint resolution approved December 18th, 2001, United States Congress designated September 11th of each year as Patriot Day. And whereas in proclaiming September 11th Patriot Day in 2003, President Bush called upon government and all Americans to display flags at half-staff on that day and to observe a moment of silence beginning at 8:46 a.m. Eastern daylight time to honor the innocent victims who lost their lives. And whereas in 2009, President Barack Obama issued a presidential proclamation officially designating September 11th as a national day of service and remembrance. And whereas on September 11th, 2021, the 20th anniversary of 9/11, we reaffirm the spirit of patriotism, service, and unity. That the Board of Education of the San Bernardino Unified School District hereby recognizes September 11th, 2021, as Patriot Day and National Day of Service and Remembrance, and encourages district staff, students, and families to join together, serving our communities and neighborhoods through, and rekindles extraordinary experience of togetherness and compassion that arose in the immediate aftermath of September 11th, 2001 tragedy. So moved.
Okay. Right, it was moved and second. The second was Dr. Flores, was what I heard. Let us prepare to vote. All right, motion carried. Thank you so much. 3.2, resolution in San Bernardino High School Voter Education Weeks on September 13th through the 24th, 2021, and April 18th through the 29th, 2022. Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Madam President. Whereas the right to vote is a fundamental underpinning of democracy in our constitutional republic, one that must be personally cherished, practiced, and championed as a civic duty. And whereas young people play a critical role in our democracy by helping to choose the people who will lead us and by forcing their opinions on the issues that are most important to them. And California has an online tool that allows eligible 16 and 17-year-olds to pre-register to vote and automatically become active voters once they turn 18. And whereby reaching out, and often to students, we can help them develop a strong and lasting appreciation for the value of voting. And whereas California Education Code designates the last two full weeks in both September and High School Voter Education Week, Weeks. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District declares September 13, 24, 2021, 13 through 29, 2022, as High School Voter Education Weeks, and encourage district schools to participate in activities that help register and pre-register eligible students to vote, while encouraging informed citizens committed to being active voters once they reach voting age. So moved.
Second.
Right, it's been moved and second. Let's prepare to vote if there's no discussion. All right, motion carried. Thank you. We're now moving to 3.2, resolution recognizing DSSS Day September 2021. Ms. Sabayos?
Whereas the DSSS Day September, more commonly known as Mexico's Independence Day, 16 de septiembre, more commonly known as Mexico's Independence Day, commemorates the insurrection that led to Mexico's separation from Spain. And whereas it is an important date in the history of Mexico that marks the anniversary of the issuance of the Grito de Dolores, which Father, uh, Father Miguel Hidalgo defied Spain and called for freedom and justice for the common man. And whereas this date of historical significance for the Mexican people and other of Latin American and separated by many members of this community, including students of the San Bernardino City Unified School District, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District declares September 16th, 2021, Septiembre, and directs appropriate activities for its observance in district schools.
So moved.
Second.
Right, it's been moved and second. There's no discussion. Let's prepare to vote. Thank you, motion carried. All right, we are now at 4.1, closed session, public comments, and I do have one. I believe it's Karina Muniz. And if you are here. Thank you. Come to the mic.
I clicked the button. It's on. Hi. Good evening. I'm Karina Muniz. Um, and I've come forward to you guys. There's going to be a decision that you guys are going to have to make that isn't only, wouldn't only affect, uh, the life, my livelihood, my family, but also my purpose, serving the community of San Bernardino. I've been an employee of the district for 10 years now. Where in these 10 years, I've served not just the district, but I've poured my heart into this community. Uh, I believe that there's more than just me being here as a clerk. There's more of a reason here for why I'm, I've been placed in this city to do a job here. Um, like I mentioned, you guys will have to be voting on a decision that's going to affect not only my family, but what I, my purpose for, for serving the community here in San Bernardino. Dylan Rogers, you, I heard you, you made a point out there. You said that you don't, you wouldn't want to lose your home. You wouldn't want to lose your, what you have, your cars or anything, because somebody did not know how to do their job. In my situation, I'm in, and I don't want to lose the goals that my husband and I have set forth for my family, because an individual did not know how to do their job. I'm here to ask you guys to please reconsider that, the decision that's being brought forward to you guys. And well, with that said, one more thing I have for you guys. I want to congratulate you guys. I was listening to you guys. I want to congratulate you guys on revisiting the foundation that you guys have, you know, set forward here for the district. It's important to build those foundations and make sure that everything is going smoothly, because you don't know when a storm's going to come, and you want to make sure that your foundation is set good. You want to make sure that your house is going to stand. So I congratulate you guys on that, on, you know, and, you know, being transparent with each other. Uh, and thank you guys for this opportunity. If you guys will allow me, I would like to, um, bring forward these two letters here that I have. I'm not sure, yeah? Time. Thank you guys, and for everything that you guys do.
All right, thank you, Ms. Muniz, and I believe the board secretary, um, can grab those. Okay, I don't have any other public comments, so at this time, we will move to 4.2, closed session, and we will return shortly. Thank you all for your time.
All right, go ahead and reconvene our meeting, call it to order. Uh, we're having a few technical difficulties with, uh, Dr. Rogers's computer, so I'll go ahead and facilitate the meeting. We'll move on to action number 5.1. Board of Education will consider the appointment of the following position, elementary school vice principal, Hunt Elementary School, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined, funding 035. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the appointment of the following employee, Ms. Tamara Brown, excuse me, elementary school vice principal, Hunt Elementary School, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined, funding 035. So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Adina Rosales. Uh, any discussion?
Let's say congratulations.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Flores. And I believe she is present today, right? And we could have her stand up so we could say hello to her and welcome her? Oh, I apologize. We're here. We do need to vote, so stand by, let us vote. I love technology sometimes. We're faster than technology, unbelievably.
Mr. Vice President, I just want to say it's amazing you're one of our, our students, uh, and then became one of our, uh, teachers, and then went up the ranks. So that's, that's an incredible feat. So congratulations.
Yes, it is, Dr. Flores. Official, seven, zero vote. Congratulations. And, yep, I, I love this story as well. Great story. Tamara, a student of our district and just worked her way up. And then also Cal State San Bernardino graduate, I saw many times over, so you stayed close to home and looked through the ranks and stay with our city and continue to take care of it. So thank you very much. All righty, folks. Next one will be 5.2, Director Creative After School Programs for Success. Notice caps. And let me go ahead and take a look at that. Uh, be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the appointment of the following employee. And, oh, mine doesn't have the name, so I have to go old school here, but we all know who she is, so. All right, Ms. Ann Pearson, LA, oh, gosh darn it, that's not the one. It didn't come up on mine now. Ms. Ann Pearson, Director Creative After School Programs for Success, caps, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined, funding 459. So moved. Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Dr. Flores. Any discussion?
Just congratulations, Ms. Pearson.
I still get the vote. My, my bad.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Not that kind of discussion yet, Dr. Flores, but any other discussion? All right, let's take a vote. All right, it is official. Now we can say congratulations to Ms. Ann Pearson, and I believe Ann is here as well. Ann, could you, we say hello to you and congratulations, Dr. Flores?
I just want to say we have great confidence in you, and we know you're going to do a great job, so.
And another wonderful story, I believe 28 years. Correct me if I'm wrong with the district? Oh, 28 years in education. All right, and another Cal State graduate, I believe, as well, San Bernardino. So, go Yotes, all righty, myself as well. So it's great to, again, from our local area, and continue to support and lead our district. Thank you. I think, Madam President, are you, no? All right, I'm going to keep on going then. Gets me to leave my mask off for a little bit, so that's kind of nice. All right, 5.3, comes up, right? All right, be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the notice of recommendation for disciplinary action and statement of changes to dismiss the following classified employee from his or her employment with the district, HR class 21, 22, dash ER. So moved. There's a motion by Mr. Tillman.
Second.
Second by Dr. Hill. Any discussion? All right, we'll take a vote. All right, looks like the vote is seven, zero, so motion carries for 5.3. We'll move on to 5.4. All right, be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts a notice of recommendation for disciplinary action and statement of changes to dismiss the following classified employee from his or her employment with the district, HR class 21 dash 22, dash ER. So moved. We have motion to approve.
Okay.
And second by, I'm sorry, Dr. Flores. All right, second by Dr. Flores. Any discussion? Madam President, I'm being a late hour. Can we, uh, at some point do public comments?
We're going straight to public comments after, just after this piece right here. This is the report out. It's next.
5.4 carries, so we will move, continue to move on, so we can get the public comment. 5.5, expulsion of students, positive youth development. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts and adopts a recommendation and findings of facts of the Positive Youth Development Department, nor expulsion of the following students with identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the board rules and regulations in compliance with Education Code 48900. Both individuals?
I can't.
All right, it's been moved. Now, Madam President, I have to take action on each one of these individually or altogether? All right, and the first student is number 418291, second student is number 483, I'm sorry, 257, and third student, 0296. Was there any discussion on that issue? I hear none, so 5.6, uh, carries again, once again, seven, zero vote. This one's a little bit longer, so, uh, 5.8? Oh, no, 5.7, correct? Oh, my goodness gracious. They all look similar. Little dry run here. Give me patience, please. Thank you. 5.6, student recommended for expulsion, but terminated in student assertive discipline due to completion of youth court, availability of other means of correction and/or due process errors. Positive youth development involved, the Board of Education approves the following students recommend, recommended for expulsion, but expulsion is deemed inappropriate based on due process errors, insufficient evidence, and/or the availability of other means of corrections in compliance with Education Code Section 48900. Therefore, although they are recommended, expulsion is not granted. Student number 517589, and student number 462446. Both. It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, let's go to a vote. All right, let's go to a vote. All right, motion. Go on to 5.7. Lift of expulsion of students, positive youth development. Be it resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the readmission of the following students with identification numbers as indicated below to schools of the San Antonio Unified School District in accordance with the regulations in compliance with the Education Code 48900. Student number 427091 and student number 422990. Moved. It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to 5.8. All right, petition to expunge, rescind, or modify youth court or expulsion. And this is from Positive Youth Development. It resolved, the Board of Education authorizes expulsion and/or youth court modification, expungement, or rescinding of the following students with identification numbers as indicated below to schools of San Antonio Unified School District in accordance with the Board rules and regulations in compliance with Education Code 48900. 403172. And let me finish this one here. Education Code 48917, Section E, states upon satisfactory, satisfactory completion of a rehabilitation assignment of a pupil, the governing board shall reinstate the pupil in a school or order the expungement of any or all records of the expulsion proceedings. Education Code 48213 states that a student can be excluded from attendance pursuant to Section 120230 of the Health and Safety Code or Section 49451. If a principal or his designated terms that the continued presence of the child would constitute a clear and present danger to life, safety, and health of a pupil or school personnel. The governing board is not required to send prior notice of exclusion to the parent or guardian of the pupil. The governing board shall send a notice soon as reasonably possible after the exclusion. Moved. It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right, 5.8 carries. All right, we're moving on to public comments, receive public comments.
Thank you so much, Dr. Wyatt. And we again want to apologize to our viewing audience and those that are making public comments, that our meeting has been a little bit more lengthier. However, we are now at 6.1 pursuit to the provision of the Governor's Executive Order N 2920 dated March 17, 2020, certain requirements of the Ralph M. Brown Act suspended. This is the only time that the public will have to address the Board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdiction, such as districts' policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under the California law, no person is immune for liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made. Our first speaker tonight is Albert Anaya, and we ask that you would come to the podium if you are here. Welcome.
Hello, Superintendent and School Board members.
Can you put the mic closer to your mouth?
All right, can you hear me now?
Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Hello, Superintendent and School Board members. My name is here today as a father of a child with autism attending Bob Holcombe Elementary in the second grade. We recently moved to San Bernardino from Irvine due to work. My son struggled in Irvine due to his behaviors. But once the Irvine School District gave my son a 101, he began he was finally able to get access to an education by learning how to sit, complete worksheets, and make friends. For many parents, this seems normal and easy for their children. But for us parents who have children with special needs, any simple accomplishment is a milestone. The San Bernardino Unified School District wants to remove his 101. I come here to this meeting to ask you and beg you to take into consideration the students in the, in the special education program when making decisions about the budget and hiring. Students but only when school resources are provided to them. These students do not independently learn. They need someone and resources to help them get an education and give them a chance to survive in our world once they exit the school district. Know that my son with special needs will most likely not reach my wishes. To go to a UC school, to play sports in high school, to run a half marathon with me, to have his own family, and most importantly, to be a world citizen. My current goal is for him to have a school diploma. I ask that you please join me in helping him by taking his story into consideration when moving forward this school year, when making budget decisions and hiring of personnel. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Anaya, we have your information. Give this to the superintendent so that he can coordinate with the appropriate person and are you, okay, Dr. Flores, I thought you were saying something. Okay. Thank you so much. And we have his full information here. Yes, it's all here. Our next speaker, I believe, is, is it Eldon Blewett? If I'm saying that wrong, is it Eldon Blewett, if you're still here?
Excuse me.
He's a bus driver, one of our bus drivers. Melissa H., are you here with us? Melissa H. I think it's Tricia Dyson, if Tricia is here. And Nicholas DiSo, DiSozio, DiSozio. And what we will definitely do, Superintendent Irvin, we would definitely want to reach out to these individuals because of this unusual him coming for it. But these others that are not here, we want you to reach out to them. Encourage them to come back. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendents. My name is Nicholas DiStasio. I am a history and STEM teacher at DVLSA. I represent them as their union member, uh, union leader, no, words. Since the start of our school year this year, we have with Savant Charter School. Since then, our staff members have been put into danger by actions or inaction from Savant or our district. One. Or Savant, excuse me. On August 23rd, entrance to one of our active classrooms, C3, which shares the border with our two schools. Our students were not able to get in and out of the classroom due to boxes and chairs that were placed in front of there. At which point, they moved said boxes and chairs in place exit immediately next door, R2, our classroom. So that the entire half of the C Wing could not evacuate in case of emergency. I, this was there for two days cumulative. Next, on August what a pregnant teacher went through the safety railing that separates our walkway from the lower walkway. This is about a two-foot drop if you've not been to Devil A Hill Middle School. Not going around, going through the rails around on our campus, putting themselves in danger. It is incredibly dangerous and it was something we do not allow our own staff or our own students to do. Savant staff is working through our halls since the beginning of the school year, which is a violation of our facility's use agreement. Our staff is deeply concerned about with COVID safety. As a district, we were told that we were not allowed to have any family members or friends on campus at any time. But that posed to our site. Yet, for two solid weeks, while Savant was setting up their classrooms on our campus, their students, and by their students, I mean their children, friends, were allowed on campus unmasked. And of the district's policy. Increasing the risk that is put on our students, our staff, and our community, which has already been impacted heavily by the COVID-19 crisis. Next, multitude of unknown individuals traveling through our campus, pushing carts through our campus, interacting and stopping our students on their way to lunch. All, we assume from Savant, but not wearing badges, not identifying themselves, walking through the middle of our campus. On August 30th, a half-naked man, I kid you not, a half-naked man entered our school through Savant's driveway because there's currently no way to secure our, our site. Traveled all the way down to our PE area and started harassing our students as security and school police had to get involved because our campus cannot be secured. On Friday, September 3rd, an unidentified female came through the Savant gates onto our campus once again, demanding to see a counselor. We have no idea who this person again. Came in through an unlocked gate that is for Savant's driveway because the rest of our campus has not been secured as it was promised to us. Again, security and school police had to get involved. Today, September 9th, Savant uses our C Wing walkway in front of four of our classrooms to precede a procession of students for hours up and down our hallway to use one to D11. D11 is completely our fence. There was supposed to be something put in place to separate these two. There's nothing. So their students were interacting with ours at dismissal. A group of about, I don't know, 15 of their kids at the most were stuck in the our school was letting out nearly 700 students. That was today. There were numerous meetings, promises made between the two schools that our schools would be safe and secure. None of those things have been done in to our safety or Savant's. And it needs to be addressed immediately. Again, today, one of our teachers was trapped on campus because Savant's drop-off area interferes, excuse me, or parking lot that we use for our handicap and our PE teachers. He was not able to leave campus until 4:45 when Savant, the Savant parking lot finally cleared. It was completely unable for two hours. Law states that Savant's safety plan has to be in line with Devil A Hill's plan. It is not. It is not in line with OSHA either. Page eight of Savant's safety plan, emergency signals that they are using are currently whistled. Page 10, the location utility controls and fire extinguishers are out of compliance. It references a gymnasium. We have no gymnasium at Devil A Hill Leadership and Steam Academy, so I have no idea what this is referring to. No evacuation map, no primary or secondary evacuation site mentioned on their safety plan that was turned into us. On page 12, their classroom emergency kit has games for kids. Doesn't have any other resources that would be required or necessary in an event of emergency, just games. Page 12, candles and matches are referenced rather than flashlights. You are not allowed to use can, open flames inside a classroom or this situation.
Thank you, Mr. DiStasio, for your comments. Ms. Cunningham? Are there any virtual comments? No.
There are none.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. That will end our public comments. We are now at 7.1 public hearing and adoption of tentative agreement, reopen our Article 9, protection and safety between Unified School District and the Communication Workers of America Local 9588. Human Resources, I will open this public hearing. Are there any comments? No.
Madam President, where are you?
We're at 7.0 public hearings.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, I'm going to close it. Be it resolved that the Board of Education adopts the tentative agreement, reopen our Article 9, protection and safety City Unified School District and the Communication Workers of America Local 9588.
Moved.
Been moved and second. Let's, is there any if not, we will prepare to vote. Mr. Tillman?
Nope.
Thank you. All right, motion carried. Thank you so much. We are now at 8.0 reports by union organization. 8.1, San Bernardino Teachers Association. Is there a representative tonight?
Yes, there is.
All right, we can hear you.
Good evening, President Rogers, members of the Board and Cabinet. I'm Ashley Bidas. I'll call her President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association. And I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of our 3,000 members. We are now six weeks into the new school year. And as I come before you tonight, a new school year normally brings excitement, but the only word that I can use to describe chaotic. One of the strengths of this district for over 20 years and that has continued during this pandemic has been that the superintendent has shared information with the bargaining units about what is being presented to the Board. My they are getting sick and they are still not getting clear and consistent, if any, communication about confirmed or suspected COVID cases at their school sites. There is even inconsistency between letters being sent home and what is put on the dashboard. And if there is being communicated well to the sites, whether it comes through the administrators or the cabinet. Our members need to know if they have been exposed so they can take necessary precautions to protect themselves and their families. On top of all of this, our students are extreme social emotional trauma and they are exhibiting their trauma at school. They are angry and scared, which they are expressing in unproductive ways. When the pandemic began, we worked together to figure out solutions to meet these new challenges. We are in 2021 and your partners in education are not being included. These things, we all should be working on collaboratively in order to ensure we're supporting our students and our staff to keep our school community safe and instruction. If we are all truly in this together, this should be our top priority. What changed?
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. And I believe we will be talking about more of that in a later part of our agenda. 8.2, California School Employees Association. Is there a representative on the line tonight?
Madam President, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Hello.
Hello. Hello, Board members, Cabinet, and all others in attendance who has left because of the timeframe. No pun intended, but anyway. My name is Only Jimenez and I am the president for CSCA Chapter representing our district's classified workforce. As you all know, this is the time when the different bargaining units begin the process of negotiations. The district will be presenting to you our most current proposal. We would ask that you have taken into consideration commitment and dedication the classified workforce is showing during these times while you review the proposal. This, of course, is in addition to the continued risk our members are taking during this time to ensure our schools are and our students are receiving everything they need through the diverse roles that the classified workforce is involved in to serve in them. The risk of exposure is still very real. Virus of the virus are still becoming an aspect of concern, yet are still return to work day to day to fill their duties to serve our students and staff. We understand the district's position of being physically responsible during these times. And we hear the district's rationale for preferring off-schedule salary increase. CSCA's focus, on the other hand, is that the classified workforce is compensated on a schedule to offset. The ongoing increases will just kick the can down the road, so to speak, to later negotiations where disparity to be addressed. We also understand the district's concern in regards to the current situation. Thus, we feel that the counterproposal not only addresses the current concern and focus in regards to the one-time funding, it also addresses the classified workforce to the district and its students by showing that they are appreciated. We intend to continue this sharing the focus CSCA has for an on-schedule salary increase in the future while addressing the current position we are in now with our proposal. Confident that the future will hold a more viable solution for on-schedule negotiations and are willing to address those in due time. For the time being, we ask that the Board consider CSCA's proposal as it stands while we look forward to future negotiations. For the time being, we ask that the board consider CSCA's proposal as it stands while we look forward to future negotiations. Schedule gap in a prompt manner to prevent a greater discorporation in the future with the increase of cost of living. We know that you have the best interests in mind for our students as well as the classified members that serve them. Thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments. 8.3 Communication Workers of America, is there a representative tonight?
Yes, good evening, Honorable Board and SBCUSD staff. Hunter with CWA 9588 just on tonight to acknowledge the presentation and approval of tentative agreement of the reopener that was that was agreed to on March 2021. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And 8.4 San Bernardino School Police Officers Association, is there a representative tonight? No, they're shaking in person, no. All right. We're now moving to 9.0 reports and presentations. 9.1 tonight is our San Bernardino City Unified School District update.
Welcome and good evening.
Oh, there we go. There I am. Good evening, Board. Good evening, President Rogers, Dr. Wyatt, Vice President, Superintendent Irving, Board members, community staff. Tonight, we're here to share with you just a key matters as it relates to SBCUSD and where we are for this school year. So if you'll go ahead and turn the slide, please. Specifically, the updates the Board will hear tonight are, as I said, three areas. First and foremost, COVID-19, where we are. Key elements of COVID-19. So hear a little bit about our dashboard. You'll hear about our sanitation procedures. Do want to emphasize we will have a town hall on Thursday night that will go a bit more in-depth on some of what we're going to share tonight. You'll get an update on our virtual academy. We're going to close out with teaching and learning because that is the reason why we're here as we ensure that our students and our staff are safe and healthy. I'm have a dynamic team behind me, and so I'm going to turn it over to members of the team, starting with our safety officer.
Thank you, Dr. Menares. Good evening, Board and Community. What I'm showing here is layers of mitigation. So we know within COVID, as we've heard since March of 2020, there's multiple layers in keeping folks safe. It's not one thing that's going to do it. It's a tiered approach. And so we know that getting our community vaccinated is key. Are pushing that and we are partnering with our community, partners with Department of Public Health to do that. We know that encouraging our families and our staff members to remain home if they're sick, if they're exhibiting new symptoms is going to be key. Outdoors, so we're moving a lot of seen on campuses, assemblies, stuff that we would normally do indoors, allowing those educational programs to continue and move into the outdoor environment where there's more airflow. And then obviously keeping our face coverings on indoors. We know this is a mandate by the state of California to on while we're indoors. And we believe that these are some of the mitigation factors that are going to keep us safe. Also, our HEPA units that we've installed in every classroom. And so just reiterating that and showing that to the Board and the community again. Next slide, please. Bit of of history. I know it's been a while since we've looked at a slide that showed the cases of COVID within our community. And so taking you back a year into about September of 2020, you'll see on the slide there where we were at. The single, maybe double digits early on. You'll see the gradual climb in cases as we got into the winter months into the times of season where people get sick and also our spike in COVID that we saw the worst of it 2020. And then the decline where we got to our lowest points in about May, where we started the vaccination cycles, folks were home more. And then so between May and now, we are seeing an uptick in cases within our community, with within our, the city of San Bernardino, within the city of Highland and the school district boundaries, we are seeing an uptick. And so just showing you where we're at a year out, and it's something we're paying attention to. We all know we're hearing about the Delta variant, we're hearing about the new MU variant. Regular updates from both the CDPH, California Department of Public Health and our local county Department of Public Health who are telling us really too soon to know anything definite with the the new variant and how it's going to impact and and its susceptibility to the something we're watching now. So with me, I have our partners that the Board brought on to help us manage COVID. We know this is a Herculean task. We know no school district in the nation has ever done this work before. Bringing in a team that could help us manage it so our educators can focus on the classrooms was a decision that the Board made and a wise decision. And so I want to invite them up. They're going to give you an update on where we're at with our partnership with them, the COVID liaison as well as our dashboard that we have up and running. And then we'll turn it over to Mr. Precy, who will go into a further dive into our hygiene practices.
We're happy to announce the testing is now up and running.
Can you get closer to the mic? Can you get closer to the mic?
How's this? All right. Good evening, everyone. We're happy thing is now up and running with COVID rapid testing available at all school sites. We are aware of state and national shortages in rapid tests and are doing our best to manage this. Testing has been an option since last week for close contacts to allow them to remain in school. Date, we've conducted about 200 tests of staff and students. We're also happy to announce that all school sites now have their COVID liaisons and we currently have over 80 COVID liaisons, including floaters to assist when there are callouts or when particular sites need additional support. The COVID Liaisons Program includes both school cluster nurses and site liaisons. The school cluster nurse is responsible for a group of liaisons and each school site has its own COVID liaison. The cluster nurses are tasked with providing clinical support in terms of observing potential symptoms of COVID-19, assessing potential risk in the school setting, ensuring clear communication to all stakeholders and escalating cases as appropriate. Site liaisons, of course, are tasked with symptom screening, risk assessment of children school with COVID-19 symptoms. Facilitation of self-administered COVID-19 testing, initiation of the contact tracing process, ensuring that information is kept as confidential as possible. In terms of testing, testing started as of last week. Again, we've had good results. 200 rapid tests performed in a period of less than a week. Testing is being provided at all school sites in an effort to keep our students and staff on campus to help keep schools open and facilitate learning. In terms of contact tracing, our team has been working very diligently contacts of students and staff who test positive for COVID-19. With each student or staff member, we provide one-on-one individual support, knowing that this is a personal medical issue for our staff, students, family and community. Standard Handbook. So last week, we developed a standard operating procedures handbook in partnership with the district, our staff at AMLLC, the San Bernardino County Department of Public Health and the California Department of Public Health. It provides a comprehensive overview of the processes in place at schools to reduce the spread of COVID-19 and manage COVID-19 concerns. It also provides a framework for clear communication with all stakeholders and aides and ensuring consistency of services throughout the district. As we're all aware, said, this has been a learning opportunity for all of us over the past three to four weeks of schools being open. And we will continue to learn and pivot and improve the processes in place going forward. These lessons have included establishing better communication with staff, improving communication points of contact and the liaisons in the school fostering those collaborative relationships. And we are grateful for the opportunity to work so diligently for the district. Deeply value the collaborative relationship we've developed with the district and its site leaders through our join-in-ever to keep safe and attending school in person.
All right. To be an overview of the dashboard. And we're going to give you just a high level, so it's available there and the links on the slide for the Board and for our community that's following online. But what you're going to see, we know with looking at community dashboards, typically there's a 14-day lag. And you're going to have that 14-day lag is because cases are still being worked. These don't happen quickly. They don't happen in a matter of an hour. You have a lot of interviews to do. You have to to talk to folks to figure out where they've been, six-foot distance, all those things, and those take time. We've tried to get as close to real time as we can. So there will be some discrepancies in between letters sent out and it not matching the dashboard. That's going to be natural as the time condenses. So what you're going to see on the COVID dashboard is 24-hour period where we're taking in the new cases, we're working with our site leaders, the COVID liaisons to make sure that everything matches up and then we're posting it out for the public. What you're going to see on the dashboard is the active COVID staffer students. Next slide, please. So what is on the dashboard and what are you going to be seeing? So a new case is someone who has self-reported a positive COVID case. So these can be our parents. They're calling from home, they're saying little Johnny's at home and not feeling well, exhibiting symptoms. We've got him tested. It's he, they have COVID. And so we don't want them coming to the school to report that. We want them to do their due diligence. Same thing with our staff members. Stay home, get tested and let us know what the results are. We have cases on the campus. It'll also require our due diligence to confirm it. So making sure that we have a positive PCR, this is the lab. These are the ones that you self-swab, it goes to the lab within 24 hours, you have your results. And then there's a positive rapid test. The ones that are in short supply across the nation. That's what we were just informed. So these are the ones where you can self-swab and within about 15 minutes, you're going to have results. Less accurate than the PCR. Any positive case that comes out of a rapid test has to PCR test. So it's kind of a snapshot of what's going on, but then has to be followed up on. And then all new cases, if they land on this dashboard or they come back as positive or exhibiting symptoms, they're sent home. They must remain home until we can confirm it by either time or they test out. Next slide, please. So on the right-hand side of this, what you'll see is the active cases. So this is a 10-day window of cases that are active that could impact a campus. So once the 10 ends and someone is no longer symptomatic, where they could, they could bring the symptoms to school and get others sick, they would fall off the dashboard. So this wouldn't stay as a running, you know, forever and ever and ever. This would be, what are the active cases that at this time? So as someone ends their 10-day isolation period, they're removed from the dashboard. Now, this doesn't necessarily mean that somebody is over COVID, right? We know there's long COVID where there's people that exhibit symptoms or they suffer from it for a long time. Means they're not asymptomatic or they're not symptomatic any longer and we would remove them from the dashboard at that time. So they wouldn't stay on our list as an active COVID case simply because they're dealing with a personal medical issue at that time. Next slide, please. So what you can view here is either all cases for the district or you can start to drill down. So if you wanted to know what's going on in a particular cluster of schools, you know, say the San Bernardino area, the Cajon area, you can drill down into a particular school cluster. Into an individual school. You can also look at the new cases as it relates to students and staff. And so, you know, keeping with confidentiality, making sure we're not giving up anybody's personal medical information and also the level of transparency that we all desire through COVID. This is the dashboard that we've created for our community. Next slide. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sam Precy. He's going to go over our sanitation protocols and where we're at as far as cleaning schools. Thank you, Board.
Okay, and I'm going to start right start, I think, Mr. Tillman, do you have?
In terms of other districts, are other districts doing more testing? Because I heard that in LA Unified, are they testing all their students?
What they're saying.
And how often are they doing that?
Weekly.
And do we, do we ever test all our students?
We have not.
And are they, have we looked at their numbers? Are they doing more? Identifying more positive, which means contact tracing, which reduce the spread? Have we considered doing testing all students ever at sites?
So I don't think we've considered it. Obviously, it's something we could explore if that was the Board's direction. We know that they are, they're getting more positive tests. We believe they're using the rapid tests out there. So they are getting more positive tests, which then the students would be sent home for quarantine until a lab confirmed test would come through.
And available for that? Mr. Sullins? Is the funding available for
So, so the testing for schools is funded by the state of California.
I'm asking, Mr. Sullins.
So to here, Viteri's comment is the state does fund a portion. However, there is no new dollars. The state has instead, aside from grants for such purposes, has is recommending that districts utilize the one-time dollars that they've received over the COVID pandemic period.
Well, I would just encourage the district to look at what some of the other districts are doing. And if we think it's more safe, then you should bring it back to the Board. We should, we should consider that.
So, Mr. Tillman, we actually just finally got tests into our actual schools at the end of last week. And in the meantime, we were legal and looking at what options are, what other districts are doing. And in, and what we believe at this very moment would make most sense for us because we have to have parental permission in order to test. At this point, that's what we have even in LA Unified has to do that. Any of the districts that are mandating testing, the parents have to agree to it. So rather than bring that forward to the Board at this time, what we're going to do is we're going to monitor the next month of what is happening with our families. Are even going to allow us to test when we have that and ensure that we have the tests in order to be able to move forward with the policy. And then we'll be able to bring a very sound recommendation to the Board. There's still a few things that are up in the air. Parents do have the option to say, I don't want you to test my child. And we can put policy in place there, but we want to make sure that we that we, well, we want to, again, see what our community is saying. If most of our community is okay when we offer that is a really easy sell to move forward. And then we, of course, want to make sure that we're going to have the tests. Because as Mr. Viteri said, LA Unified made this edict, right? They said before school even started, they were going to test all their students, students. We but we know nationwide, the PC, the rapid test is very low in shortage. There's not a lot out there. So we can put a policy forward and we're not going to be able to carry it through anyway.
And I'm not asking, I'm asking from a perspective if we can do more in terms of testing. Good example would be, say you had a site that had two or three students in a class that tested positive. That may be a time where you test everyone in the class just to make sure because you had that high number. Build, you could build some protocol that would ensure more safety when you have these red flags out there that say, well, if this many students tested positive on their own, then maybe we should test the entire class. And I agree, as if the parents although we're able to do the tests free of charge, there's still people out there that are charging and people who aren't aware still may think that they have to pay. But I would encourage parents to the meeting that if they go to the county's website, sbcounty.gov, no, sbCOVID19, so it's sbCOVID19.com, actually. And they have vaccines, vaccine sites there and testing and they're all free. But I just think that we should have our protocol in place for certain circumstances where we do provide tests to classes.
We definitely believe that that is an area that we want to further pursue. We want to make, again, we're going in this next month and how many parents, we heard already, we did 200 tests just in the last couple of days. And it's been, it's been helping. So as much as we can identify, because it really serves two purposes. It keeps more students safe, absolutely, and staff. And it in school because otherwise we're quarantining children for long periods of time and staff, right? So, so we need data. We need all of that. We're in a complete agreement with you.
Thank you.
Dr. Florence?
So what Mr. Tillman was saying, you know, who specifically gets tested, you know? And do you have protocols in place like he recommended or is suggesting if there are three
three, you know, kids, you know, do they get tested? And then I'm thinking about high school. If you have high school kids, you have period after period, and you don't learn until the end of the day, well, that we're in that area, you know, need to be tested in that classroom and the teacher.
Yes.
And so, you know, my question is, you know, who gets tested? And how is the decision made based on scenarios? And do we have those scenarios?
Yeah, that's the contact tracing. I'll let Mr. Vettier speak to that.
Yeah, great question, Dr. Flores. So we have scenarios where you have a positive student in either a high school or a middle school setting, knowing that, you know, six, seven classes, there's at least two or three kids in my circle of six feet, right? So we've already experienced those scenarios where, when our... Contact tracing, they've identified 14 to 21 students right off the bat that are within those proximities. Those students are all going to have the opportunity to test. So they're all going to be, all those families are going to be contacted, and they're going to be given specific guidance. Watch for symptoms. We want to keep your child in school. If you agree to have them tested, we can keep them in class as long as they stay asymptomatic. They don't start exhibiting symptoms. They keep their face coverings on. They agree to test twice a week. Those are the CDPH protocols. We have the ability to do that and are doing that.
And how are we communicating that to our families and our students?
So we have a tiered approach. So the student that's positive, or students that are positive, are getting one-on-one interaction with both the student, the contact family.
Eric, that's not my question. My question is, how do our families know that whether they have it or not, but how do they know that that protocol exists, that they have that available to them?
So that is, we're going to be discussing that at our town hall. We're going to be going into more depth with that with them. And that's really the relationship that we're trying to build with the schools and the liaison and the community at that campus on sharing that message. We're using social media platforms, et cetera, just to share partnerships there, the management of COVID's there, and the liaison that's on the campus is there to support them.
They have a solution for getting permission. We send out permission slips to everybody, and they return them. Have to wait for someone to, you know, each family to give us permission.
Yep.
And we have them on hand, and so that way we don't have to wait, and we mitigate the time lag, the gap.
Yeah, we agree. We're using Parent Square to do that. So we're kind of casting the wide net to try to get everybody to sign the permission slips ahead of time and the registration ahead of time. We also want to make sure that if I sign a permission slip now, and my child, you know, I don't get that phone call from the school, that there's that real-time communication too. So I remember signing something, but now it's time to test little Tommy. I also want that phone call with the family right then to say, "Hey, we've had that."
Right, you have to have that protocol.
Absolutely.
And reassurance. You know, as we get a lot of complaints, and I am no longer going to reveal who they, what employee it is, whether it's a teacher, whether it's an administrator, or whether it's a member, because I don't want them to be reprimanded or retaliated against. And this is serious stuff, and when they have real questions, they're answered. And I have had numerous reports that our COVID liaisons are incompetent. They don't even know the protocol. They can't respond to teachers. They can't respond to... I'm not going to name schools, but it's more than one, it's more than 10, and if it's more than 10, those are just the ones that are telling me. And so I don't know if our company, you know, oversees these COVID liaisons in terms of their knowledge, and the fact that we're getting, I'm getting reports that they're incompetent, that's a lack of trust, and it's... And it's a problem. So it isn't all peachy, you know, peachy keen, right? So I'm just raising that as a red flag, and it's not just a red flag. I want answers. This is dangerous, and if we have liaisons that are not knowledgeable in the own protocol, that's a problem. That's a big problem. And, you know, we have teachers that are getting sick. We have students that are very ill. I'm not going to reveal where they're from that are in the hospital and incapacitated. And that leads to my other question. Are we keeping track, not just of the quantity, but of the severity of the COVID that our kids and our staff are suffering? It's just a question. I hope we are. My next question is, who populates the COVID dashboard?
So it's a joint partnership between the liaison and the school site. So depending on how the information comes in, there's a vetting process to where the liaison that's onsite, as well as our employee side. So we have cases that are coming in as it relates to employees that aren't necessarily going through the school liaison, so you may report it on a Sunday, on a Saturday night. So the dashboard is updated by both liaison as well as the school site leaders, so that they are having that conversation and that relationship about what they're experiencing at their school site. And so there's a daily check and... Sure that the data is accurate, and so that's why...
It's on a daily basis?
It's on a daily basis, and that's why there's a 24-hour lag. And that's, in all reality, that's why you see seven-to-14-day lags in this work. Most counties and cities, because it's so integral that you get a full investigation before you start posting data. And so the desire to have the data posted on a daily basis can sometimes... Confusion on what is actually a COVID case, what was later determined to not be a COVID case, and so, but we have that relationship built between the liaisons and the school site administrators where they're going over that data daily.
I'm assuming that teachers are informed about who is out and why they're out?
Teachers that would be impacted by that student or by a peer would be. So it's a need-to-know, right-to-know, and so if I'm a student in your classes, you're all going to know that Eric Vettier is out with COVID. Where was he sitting in your class? Were you exposed to Eric? What was your proximity to Eric? Now, will every teacher on the campus know that Eric Vettier had COVID? No.
I'm just talking about the teachers where it happened.
Absolutely, absolutely. They actually, it's key for us that we talk to them, because they're going to help us build circle, right? They're going to help us know that Eric went to the library today and spent three hours in the library, or Eric was in, actually was misbehaving and, you know, was in Dr. Flores' class all day and not in mind. They're going to help us with that.
If this kid has COVID, what's the call for who gets contact tracing? Is it they sat next to somebody, or is it all the kids that sat around him or her? You know, who makes that decision?
So CDPH, California Department of... Given us the guidance, and the guidance is within six feet for more than 15 minutes over a 24-hour period. That's considered a close contact.
Within six feet?
Within six feet.
So what if they sit like three feet, like I'm sitting next to...
You would be considered a close contact, and so you would get that, you would get that notification. Now, Ms. Sabios wouldn't get the notification. She may get a general notification that there was a COVID case within the classroom, but she's not going to get specific information. It was Superintendent Irvin, or that it was Dr. Flores that had it. You would get that to help us build that circle. So it's the, you know, measuring the privacy with the need to prevent a spread.
Yeah, I understand. I have just a couple more questions. I really recommend that we keep a running tally. You know, I don't, I know it's very complex, but we should know, you know, how many people had COVID along, you know, so that we, at the, you know, we know how many. I know for the dashboard we shouldn't, but how many have we had, you know? Because the numbers are low, but they're coming off, you know? But how many people did, how many people got it? To me, that's important.
Sure, and we do have that data.
Yeah, that's important. Are you doing that? Are you keeping a running tally?
Yes, ma'am.
So is it in the back door, or is it, where is it?
We can provide that at the Board's request. We do have, we do have all the, as far as our public-facing dashboard, we're making sure that what's on there is relevant to a COVID concern that still exists for that school. What we don't, so you have a high school, you could have potentially many more COVID cases, so we don't want to show hundreds of...
They fall off, you know? You have to keep a running tally of how many people actually had it.
Yeah, we do have that, for every school.
And then I know we have anti-vaxers as employees and anti-maskers, but they are required. Masks are required.
That is correct.
And so what are the consequences of employees that don't wear a mask?
Dr. Funchess or Dr. Menares, you guys want to take that? Consequences for employees who don't wear masks?
Oh, I believe the question was, what happens to employees if they don't wear masks? And so there are two things that are happening with that. One in particular, we are working with our legal team just to make sure that we have proper protocols in place for working with our employees. Number one, after we give them verbal, we give them written notice about the proper protocols for wearing masks, right? So that's one of the things that we're doing, and I hope you can hear me. So one of the things is just making sure that we have proper protocols in place for providing information to employees that are not wearing, or should they not be wearing masks properly, in the form of verbal and written notices, right? So that's number one. On the second side of that, as we look at vaccination verification protocols, be a little bit more stringent processes in place should an employee not wear masks or come to work and violate any of the things that we deem necessary to keep everyone safe. That process is still being discussed and will be worked through in conjunction with our union partners.
And if they don't want to be vaccinated, I know it's their right, but are we tested, are they getting tested? Or how many times a week are they tested?
The public...
For those people that aren't vaccinated.
So the public order is for vaccine verification. So those that have been vaccinated, documentation to a district... Protocol, if you will. However, on the other side of that, if they choose not to be vaccinated, then testing would be weekly.
Weekly, okay. All right, thank you, Madam President.
And Dr. Flores, just for clarity, the testing weekly has not started yet. As a district, we're required to start that by mid-October, so we're getting HR...
Oh, by mid-October, okay.
Yes, getting all of the processes in place as...
You just sparked something in me. Do we have enough test kits to test everybody?
We have quite a few, and Mr. Vettier and I made a joke. As soon as that notice came out from the governor, I said, "So did we get a..." Or ordered. We actually had been ahead of it, so we do have a lot, but can we say that we're going to have enough for weekly testing for the number that haven't been vaccinated? We won't know yet until we get the information through HR.
What does "quite a few" mean?
What's the number, Mr. Vettier?
So we have hundreds of thousands. We know that the PCR kits, which is the lab kits, are the ones that are not in short supply, or we have not been notified that there's a short supply. So those are the ones that we're going to look to using first, the ones that go to a lab. They're more accurate, and it's a little bit longer turnaround though, so you're looking at an overnight turnaround. So if I tested today, hopefully when I wake up in the morning, I'll have the results to my inbox or to our portal. Those are not in short supply that we know of right now. It's the rapid, 15-minute ones that we're hearing is a nationwide short supply, because frankly, everybody wants to know within 15 minutes, "Do I have it or not? Can I move on with life?" And so those are the ones where, but we do believe we're going to have enough and are able to order more as soon as...
Students and our employees?
At this time, that's what we're preparing for, is to mitigate the hazards within our district, so for our staff, our students.
Mr. Tillman was saying about parents going, right? Mr. Tillman, parents going to that website for the county is important for parents, because if their child has COVID, they need to be tested as well, and hopefully we could provide the test as well.
That would be ideal. What we're concerned with right now is the amount of tests that we have access to, and so if that stabilizes and the federal government and the state tell us test kits aren't an option, that'll definitely be something that we discuss.
Do we give parents those free to go and get tested? Do we give them those?
Yes, yes. We share those on all of our platforms, Parent Square, social media, and at the town hall meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Hill?
Thank you. And you might have said this, because I had a hard time hearing some, but on the positive identification on the dashboard, is that updated, is that updated daily? That a teacher can in the afternoon or at some point go home and say, "At my school, this is what's going on"?
It's, thanks for the question, Dr. Hill. So it's a 24-hour lag. So today, they would... From, well, today's not a good day because it was, we had a holiday, but tomorrow, they'd be looking at data from the previous 24-hour period. So it's not real-time same day. We would love to get there. That's just very hard when a lot of our contact tracing, at a high school, for example, and you're having to interview 21 different kids and seven different teachers, that takes time. And so what we have committed to doing is that if you've been a close contact, as soon as we've identified you as a close contact, you're getting... So if you don't get that notification, it's the same protocols we followed since the onset of this. Always monitor for symptoms. Always stay home if you're sick. Get tested. That messaging won't change. You'll get that individual contact, though, if you've been identified as a close contact. You're welcome.
Ms. Sullins-Madina?
Yes, I have many questions, but what I'll do is, because I know you still have your presentation on the sanitation, but just really quickly, I wanted to clarify, mid-October. So we're not going to be doing testing, weekly testing until mid-October? Is that what I understood, or maybe if you can clarify?
We have until October 15th to get that public order requirement in place. And so we're testing until we finish negotiating the effects of such public order with our unions. It could be before October 15th, but at least by October 15th, we'll have to meet that weekly testing requirement.
And that's, and the mandate that employees are either vaccinated or are tested. As it relates to responding to COVID in our schools, testing is available now, so if we have employees that are impacted, we will offer them testing as a recall for being a close contact. So connected systems with COVID, but kind of two separate parallel systems.
And the other question would be with regards to, once a student was identified, or even a teacher or staff... When are you communicating this to, if it's a student, then the teacher, and then if it's a teacher, then the student, I mean, the parents? How long does it take from the moment that you find out that they were positive, to those that were around them?
So our goal is same day. Obviously, it depends on when our COVID liaison that's on the campus is notified. Generally, many of the things are coming in after hours right now about, you know, "My child's home. They're not feeling good. I'm going to get tested tomorrow," or "Wasn't feeling good when I got home, got tested rapid positive." So our COVID liaisons will get those in the morning, and they'll begin the process of contact tracing. Now, if they get notified at noon, the list of folks that they're going to contact, that may go into the evening hours, but we want to make sure that those contacts happen as quickly as possible for everybody's peace of mind, so that it doesn't go a day, or two days, or three days before I find out someone in my class was positive. We don't want that. So it's real-time, and we're able to spin up additional support at schools that may have, like a high school or middle school, where you have, you know, 17, 21 kids that need to be contacted. They're able, our team is able to deploy... They're able, our, our team is able to deploy more resources to help speed that up.
Right, in a high school, a teacher can have seven students um, or, or a student can have seven teachers. And so then would all those teachers be also notified to make sure that, you know, they know? And I think the, the, and, and Dr. Flores, we hear a lot of comments, we get text message, call, messenger, I mean, it's every, from every angle. And I've heard the opposite where teachers are kind of concerned that they haven't been notified. We see posts um, of parents not being notified. One is that they've been notified like three or four days later and they're really upset by then because why didn't you, why didn't they let us know? So if that's the job of the liaison, I'm wondering, you know, where's the disconnect if not all sites are doing that? Um, in that same next day. Um, the other piece is that not all parents have, um, was it the parent? It's not the parent portal, it's a
Parent Square?
Parent Square. Not all parents have Parent Square. From my understanding, only 90, 90% of the parents are in that. And so what happens to the 10%? They're probably the ones posting on social media because they're not getting the information. So I guess I don't want to rely also in just technology. Are we sending out paper forms? Are we doing other means of communications as well?
Yeah, and, and thanks, Ms. Rosales Medina. So there's a layered approach. So the, the uh, the COVID positive students getting individual, uh, one-on-one with the student and the family member, the close contacts are getting that. Everybody in the classroom is getting a letter sent home. School's getting a letter saying that there was a, a COVID positive case on your campus today or within your child's classroom today, uh, in various methods. So, because we know not, not all of our families have access to technology.
Okay, and so that's something that they are, are
Yes, ma'am.
Barbara, maybe, um, Dr. Flores, maybe you can answer that one really quick, just I can't ask that question.
I wanted to know who exactly gets contact tracing?
I'm, I'm sorry, Dr. Flores, before that question, um, Ginger, can you confirm on the letters? Because we're all saying, so maybe we've had conversation about a fourth letter, but I, there's three letters at this very moment.
There are three letters, three layers of letters going out. One lead to a student or staff member who is identified as a COVID potential patient. Two, the second letter goes out to those who are identified as close contacts with instructions for where they can get tested and, and what kind of symptoms and quarantine. And the third one is a school-wide letter that notifies everyone in the school that there was a case identified at their school that day. Um, the, the letter that Eric, uh, Mr. Vitier mentioned that we have not implemented is a classroom-level letter. Have that school-wide letter in place.
But the, the classroom one would be ideal, I imagine, for the teachers and for the students and the parents. So that's the one that we're not sending out in paper form.
Correct. Um, the letter also that is to the school-wide is going out via Parent Square. We did send a paper letter to every family to make sure that they know that that is where they will get the notification for school-wide COVID cases. And in fact, their um, site leader or their school site, in order to make sure their contact information in Ares is accurate. Because that's how Parent Square communicates with families. It can happen either by email, it can happen by text as part of the app, or it does a robo-call to the family. So Parent Square doesn't rely on only one method of reaching the families. It goes through all of their contact information to make sure that they are reached. But we do have to have accurate contact in our student database in order for it to do that. And so the school sites have also been asked to go through their individual students in Parent Square because it will pull out those students for them who are not contactable or who do not have current contact information. But they can update it. And so the school sites are doing that now.
Like I mentioned, it's like right now, we have 90%, but we still have those parents. So I'm glad that you're sending out paper communication.
And since we did that, that has already increased to 91%. So I did want to let you know that-
Okay, great. But it still goes back to um, we're not communicating directly to the teacher or the, or the parents in the classroom, in that one classroom yet, through paper, because like I said, not everyone is on that, you know, devices, internet and all that. And so how do we make sure that they are contacted is, uh, with regards to that situation in the classroom, the ones that were being impacted directly?
So every, so every teacher that's in a classroom that's impacted by COVID is being every teacher. So if my, if I am a high school teacher, uh, and, and little Eric has came through my class and seven of my peers, each one of those teachers is getting an individual interview by the COVID liaison. Two reasons, to notify them. And two, they're helping us build that student's six-foot circle. We can't rely on a child to tell us, where did you sit, you know, all period? So we need that adult to help us build that circle so that we know who their close contacts were. So absolutely every teacher that's in a classroom impacted by COVID or with a student that was impacted by COVID in their classroom is getting, and not just a, not just a generic letter, they're getting interviewed by a liaison.
Okay, and then I guess for the example of the high school, then all of the seven teachers for that one student is also being interviewed as well, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Same day. And so that's, so that's about, what we've been working with our school sites is for access for our teachers to make sure subs into their rooms, resident subs or other subs, so that we can get that teacher up to the COVID liaison so that they can interview them.
And if, in case they're not, because like I said, we do get messages, in case they're not, um, then who do we ask them to communicate if this communi- this disconnect? Is it the liaison's responsibility just to make sure? If I get a message, like let's just say next week, you know what, it's been three days out and I haven't been contacted, I just found out that one of our students was tested positive. Who do I refer them? I know I would refer to but also who is the responsible for, um, who didn't communicate to that teacher?
And you, and you, you hit the nail on the head. We would like for them to start at their school with their liaison. That's going to help build that relationship too, so that they know if I have any COVID issues at the school, here's my so that they can get that understanding about why they may or may not have been contacted. And then if they, if they don't get the answer that, that they're desiring, the liaison has a nurse that oversees them and then, and then ultimately me as the program manager for, uh, for AM can be contacted. So
The kids, what if the kids don't know who the liaison is?
If the, I'm sorry?
What if the kids or the parents don't know who the liaison is?
So you can, you work with your school administration.
And then I just go through the rest of my questions. Um, on page three, um, I was looking at just an example of the things that we're have, we're doing in the school site. Is it three feet that's um, kind of requested by the state that at least we have? For our students and staff?
Repeat the question one more time.
The three feet. I know it went from six feet, right, um, social distancing and we're back in classrooms and, you know, uh, we see many students in the classroom. We see and so I'm wondering, is it, it's no longer the six feet, it's now three feet?
And, and there is no distance requirement?
So there's no distance requirement?
There's no distance requirement. And so that was, that was one of those conflicting rules where, where the state was expect you to reopen schools fully. And so many school districts like ourselves replied, you know, we, we can't do that and have a distancing requirement. We just don't have the physical space in our classrooms to do that. And so that's where the requirement for any within a classroom setting went away.
And so, um, but if it wasn't, but you're saying that it's not a requirement, doesn't mean that we couldn't have done that, just even if we didn't have enough space, now we, we would just have to look at reducing the amount of students in classroom and uh, versus having them all placed in. Um, another question is, the reason why we don't have, um, the plexiglasses in the classroom? Um, is the reasons why we don't have the plexiglass, I know we had ordered, we spent a lot of when we were supposed to be socially distancing for six feet?
So that was one of the other um, early learnings, you know, when, when we couldn't, you know, we had plexiglass on everything and we were, everybody was wearing gloves. So the science over time progressed and said that the was not, was not only not needed, but it was actually hampering the airflow within a location. So having a classroom with plexiglass dividers was keeping the airflow from circulating. And it was also, you know, visited that had that in place, you, you could, the teacher at the front of the room could not hear the students in the back and vice versa. So the state, that was one of those other relaxed rules that they took away and said, um, it, not only is it not needed, it's actually hampering uh, good airflow.
And hence the is because we have plexiglass in here. And it was brought to my attention through a student that had, you know, students are really bright. Says, we don't have plexi, plexiglass in our, in our classrooms, but yet the board members do. And so it, it just kind of illustrates, you know, are we trying to protect ourselves more or is it really working? Is it not working? That the fact that we do have plexiglass and people do see, see that as well. On page four, I noticed that we started with September. September back in 2020, um, it's actually less cases versus what we have for this month of August. And so I'm curious to see, what was August's last year's numbers? If that was higher or lower?
It, it was lower, um, but I could definitely on the uh, next presentation, or we can get you guys a, a board correspondent to-
And this is where we were quarantining, this is where we were looking at, you know, strict measures and so forth. And, you know, we're going to be hitting for time and it peaked in December. So what are we doing to prepare that peak, possible peak? As we move forward too, because if, if back then we were protecting ourselves, now we're you mentioned um, basically back to normal, except now wearing masks and vaccinations and all of that. So what are we doing to prepare for that potential peak?
I think it's, I think it's, the things that we've been doing is really just emphasizing it and overseeing folks the due diligence. I mean, we're still having daily conversations about having to remind people, stay home if you're not feeling ill, don't come in, yeah, uh, get tested. And so having the testing available at the school sites is going to help us. Having vaccination is going to help us. So there are many things that we've learned, hopefully, that are going to be better from last year moving into this year. Um, and, you know, we'd like for it to be out of the woods, we'd like for it to all be done. We know we're not there. And so just taking all measures that we've put into play and just over-messaging them and making sure that we're following them.
What will it take for us to close a school site? So if we see that the cases are just increasing and at specific sites, they may not have, and I'm glad I'm going to, you know, you have the presentation, I'll have more to students. If we see that we're not, it's at the end of the day, the priority is to protect our kids, uh, our students, our staff, the, that are at the site. And if we, we know we can't, then what are the measures, immediate emergency measures to make sure you know, things um, are, are being handled in the way that either we have to close the site down? Or, uh, because if we don't have that, it, it doesn't make any sense to continue. And I'll wait for that one, but I've just, you know, that'll as you start to um, speak on that slide, which you haven't gone to yet.
And I can, I can speak to it now.
Okay.
So the, the thresholds that the state had set for us were uh, three ca- three positive cases in a classroom. That classroom down. And then uh, 5% of a school would shut the school down. 25% of a district would shut the district down.
And three cases within what time period?
Uh, well, within the 24-hour, or I'm sorry, within the 10-day um, um, monitoring period.
And the reason why I'm also asking is because, you know, when that's what the state is asking, but if we know that we're not in our schools, then we're posing everyone at risk. Now, I'm not saying that we're doing that, but if we don't do it, then it's like, you know, you shouldn't be in school. So I'm just trying to make sure that we kind of understand that I, otherwise I'll that we close the site down. But I know the parents and, and people don't want that, but if we're not doing what we need to do to ensure safety first, then we have to do what we need to do to make sure that there is that safety first.
Yeah, and, and, and agreed. And we're at the county department of public health, so we meet with them, uh, and our AM partners. We, we meet two or three times a week. They have um, two contact tracers from the department of public health that are assigned to our school district to review everything that our partners with so that they can keep an eye on that for community spread. And so they would definitely be consulted and in partnership and in alignment with anything uh, that we started to see bubble up, if we started to see an outbreak, if we started to see something, uh, it'll be a joint decision department of public health. So it's definitely something that we are constantly keeping our eyes on, but I, I don't think we're going to uh, find ourselves there hopefully. Um, we think the mitigation strategies and having AM there, the vaccinations, the testing um, is going to be what keeps us out of that hopefully.
Yeah, and I'm also on the slide now with, when it comes to AM. So then how are we holding them? Who's the one in charge of, of working directly to oversee that they're doing what they need to be doing? Is it you?
Yes.
Okay, because of what the testing or even um, Dr. Monares mentioned that we are barely receiving the test kits now. Now, none of these are expired, right?
No.
Okay. Um, and with those test kits, if we don't have sufficient the ultimate, I mean, if we don't have enough to test those that show signs or have um, are we sending them straight home? I'm just curious.
Yes, so the, the delay in the test kits was not an AM issue or a district issue. A shipping and receiving issue with the state. So we had placed the order months and months ago and it was delayed coming from them. So in the, the stopgap was to follow the quarantine guidelines. So if we were close contacts, 10 days and monitor for symptoms. So the modified quarantine, which is what we're allowed to do with our students, allows them to stay in the classrooms so as long as they don't begin to exhibit symptoms and their parents agree to the testing. But we needed those test kits, so test kits, anybody that was a close contact had to follow the CDPH quarantine guidelines and just go home. And we would revert back into that. So say we ran out of test kits, that is, that is the stopgap for that. So we would just revert right back to uh, to, to that. Emphasizing with the state is that we're, we're following your rules, you've put your rules in place, now please make sure the test kits keep coming because we're going, you know, when education across our state is going to need a lot of test kits.
Yeah, and the reason I was asking too is that those students that are there's no tests for them to take, they probably just have a common cold and they're not able to, um, they're losing instruction time.
Absolutely.
And so then I think that's what I was trying to refer to is that, okay, now we don't know for sure if they have it or they don't. It could be cold season, flu season. Now they're wasting their time in being home when they could be, you know, learning if they don't know for sure.
Yeah, we're hopeful that having the test kits in district is going to help prevent that.
Right, okay. And our, our AM is communicating with the school nurses as well, because I know that they're at one of discommunication between sites and, and AM. So we've been able to clear that up?
Yeah, they're, you know, they're building the relationships on the campuses. And so it just took a little bit of time to, for them to stabilize. They hired a lot of folks uh, from our our community. So it's taken a little bit of time to get them stable on the campus, to work through the hiccups that we've experienced, right? It's the first time any of us, including AM, have ever done this work. So we expected some hiccups and we think we've, are in a much better place now than when we started.
I just want to make sure that they're not at expense of safety and, you know, those hiccups can cost lives. Also with, um, you meant, it was mentioned 200 students have been tested so far. Um, is that district-wide in just one day or was that?
That was uh, the, the first three days of last week. So that was Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, we did 200 tests.
And was there any students that didn't get any test? That they should have received a test or, or staff?
I, I don't have that information right now.
Another thing is when the town hall, uh, when is the town hall?
Thursday evening.
This Thursday?
Yes, ma'am, Thursday evening.
Okay. And so for those parents that don't attend the town hall, how are they going to receive that information?
The town hall will be recorded and available through our YouTube channel.
And for the parents that don't get the YouTube channel and see it online?
Um, all the information that we share there is also available via um, certainly they can speak with the COVID liaison at their school to get input. So there's multiple ways to get access to the information. We share it in pieces on social media. So that's how, I mean,
I, I, I guess for those that um, I mean, we still, like I said, we still have many people, um, or families that are not social media active, they're not even phone savvy. I mean, I, I know a few that have still the flip phone easy to read, kind of. So what information, if they're not getting it directly from the school site, you know, all of this is great, but we're still missing out families. And so I guess I just want to make sure that, you know, we're always thinking about those that don't have access and, and for the parents that uh, may be in different situations and, than most of us. So we have to be mindful that anything that we do, such as like the town hall, we're able to provide those information to the school sites directly as well. to provide those information to the school sites directly as well. And if it has to be a graphic infographic and parents can see what we were discuss, what was discussed, send it home. I mean, if that's another way to do it, then I just want to make sure that we're not forgetting those as well.
I think it's important to also note that we did put a lot of this information in the roadmap to reopening and there were copies available for families if they needed them at school sites. We also mailed home to every household before school started, a letter that had an executive signed. They were informed that they could request the full copy if they needed to and also where they could find it online if they did have access, so.
If they requested, I know I was a parent, I didn't go take my time to request something. I didn't even know what the information was going to be about to begin. So it's, I just want to, I just want to make sure that we are mindful of those parents that don't ask for it because they don't know. So just just keep in mind those parents. That's it for right now.
Mr. Tillman, I had you. Did you, you're, okay, let me take you off of this. All right, and then lastly, because I know we again, board, we're going to transition to talking about the safety sanitation protocols. So this was all under the COVID, just want to make sure that all those questions were covered. And again, to, you know, I know the hour is late, but it's good that it is recorded and we want to remind our viewing audience or the public to refer back to this because it's important. We are, we're having this discussion here at our board meeting, but it will be ongoing. It is a part of our town hall that's coming up. But a couple, and I was, I was Xing off things, I think we've all been getting similar calls. But I do want to just clarify just a couple of things. So on the dashboard, when we asked about the ability, the total number, is my understanding that we just are not embedding that in there and we're just kind of going to the real time numbers and and then the why? Because I think we kind of asked for it, you know, to see the number. I mean, of course, we want to collect the number without frightening people, but the availability of that is why wouldn't it just be in the dashboard? Click one of those that says the ongoing numbers? That just a decision to not do that?
So I think, I I think, you know, we some initial hiccups with getting the dashboard live and technical issues. And so we wanted to make sure that we got out to our families in our community what was going on, such as the county did with their dashboard and we've all experienced with dashboards. We can definitely add anything we move into testing, showing the number of tests we're doing at schools may be important, the number, the full number of cases. So our A M. Partners have a full data team and they're capturing everything that we're doing. And we can definitely increase or on the dashboards as we deem necessary, so.
I think long term somewhere in there because what I'm concerned about mostly is just when I hear people question the data and I want to say we should not have, and I hope this is not the case, any reason or just make up, it just does us no good. And we have to make huge, huge decisions, right? This is, this is life or death situations, as we've said before. So I want to really be able to dispel that myth to the phone calls that are coming. People just don't believe that the data is real. There's no reason for that. And we're trusting that the district, that we're, we're building what we can give accurate information so that people can make decisions also from their home as we make a decision from this diocese. Put that out there about the truth of the numbers. And then wherever the hiccups may lie, I don't want, because I just, just, just within this recent time, people are questioning, is there a COVID liaison at every school site, right? So when here tonight, if I was to get a phone call or any of us board members, we want to know, because if it's not, we want to be realistic, right? Because this, this is not quick. I mean, it's easy to say, go do it. But then I know that there's 24 hours, 48 hours, 70 to try. So if we are not able to do that, please let us know. But as I make a mental note to what I heard tonight, when people are coming to me saying, well, I don't have a COVID liaison or they weren't really there. I heard you say that we have one for every, there's a couple floaters or something to that. That will be the information that I share. So I hope that that is correct, right?
Yeah, that is correct. Now, our A M. Group, like, like any other employer, experiences, you know, folks that resign and they have to bring people done as a stopgap is increase the number of floaters. So even in their nursing structure, they had six regions to cover with nurses. Well, they experienced some, some nurses that resign. And so hiring, training, deploying takes time. And so let's have, let's have a group that's ready to go to 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 fill those ones that become vacant. So that's where we're at right now. I don't believe that there are. Do we know how many vacant positions we have right now? So there, there, there shouldn't be any that are unfilled. Now, we know, you know, that we had a few that quit. And so the principals are reaching out saying, hey, my liaison is not here. That's correct, they're working on backfilling. But our stopgap is still, they have, there's nurses that are answering the phone. So if there's a school that doesn't see, physically see a liaison and they have some type of COVID issue, they can call the hotline or they can email COVID liaisons and they're going to get somebody deployed to them immediately. So being filled, but.
See, that's, and I just, there's some clarity in that because if I'm deploying, I don't have, right? So but I understand also, we want to be clear that if somebody was sick or something like that, that happens. But when we give information, it's like this fact, I go out there, eighty, whatever number you quoted, because that's what the community is expecting.
Absolutely.
What their job is, is what you're telling me your job is. I'm not trying to tell them what to do, but they need to be able to be there to do that job, right? So if there is a kind of issue with that, we really, really need to know about that. The other thing is you talked about the, the, the permission, you know, and I think that's important. Again, I want clarity that we know that we, parents have to give permission in the direction that we're going as. But we want to make sure as of right now, all those methods of of the three different letters, those really need to be explained. And I don't know if it just starts from the school site and build out, but there really need to get some understanding because every letter is frightening. That's what you get a letter and all you see on there is COVID. And then they're trying to, and I've seen them, they're posted, they're on, they're everywhere. But there's three different types. And so we need to explain how those came about. And the campuses also need to be able to explain whoever that person is to say you were in the room with, you were around or or you were exactly close proximity to that. And to the point where we were saying, sending out, I think, the letters, it's always, it's always a good thing to to go back to what somebody beyond in hopes of them getting it. But when we come to asking for the permission, will we be able to ask for that electronically? Or does it have to be done in a paper type of of form?
For the testing?
Mm hmm.
No. Electronically. So that is how we're asking for it. And for those families that cannot do it, then they will do it real time with us or via paper.
Yeah, because my fear is that's more coming in, who's manning that? Because I'm sure if I still had a kid in the district, they still had, took a while and that was pre-COVID, you know, job that you didn't work. So we want to tighten that up. And then lastly, whatever it needs to happen on the campus to help parents understand if their kid is out, they're not being marked absent, let's make sure that all of a chronic, you know, absenteeism because they're out because of COVID, then, you know, my perfect attendance and all those things that are important to parents don't necessarily go away because it is coming up. And they're saying, well, I chose or my kid was out. And now someone's saying, you know, and I know how that easily, we, we know it can happen, so let's just get on top of that part. And that's all I have. Mr. Tillman?
And matter of fact, I just want to remind everyone that not to lose side effect that we realize that if you send your child, risks associated right now. And everyone that sends their child to school is that they make that choice, right? And that's why we have a virtual academy. So I'm sure parents who have kids that have underlying conditions or maybe choose to do the virtual academy. And and our district has created that just for that purpose. But there's no way of getting around the fact that COVID is here. And when your, when your child comes to school, there's that possibility, right? I hope we don't lose side effect that we're still blessed to live in this country. A few weeks ago, I traveled to Costa Rica, I took a COVID test before I left because you have to take a COVID test to come back in. So I wanted to make sure I wasn't positive before I left. But on the county site, S B, S B COVID 19 dot com, went to a yellow park in Rialto, took the test at five o'clock. The next morning, I got an email or text that it was, I was negative. The test was perfectly free. On the way back to the United States, there were no free tests. We had to pay, you know, $200 to get tested in order to come back into the country. So because we live in America, we have these tests available for free here in California. The same thing with the vaccine. They were just getting vaccinated in Costa Rica. We all have access to the vaccine and that's the best thing to keep things safe for everyone 12 and over, get the vaccine. That's what makes the biggest difference. And when you look at the, the facts, the, the states and the communities that have the highest vaccination rate are now having the lowest death rate and the lowest hospitalization rate. So we know that the best tool to fight the virus right now is getting vaccinated. And I want to commend and employees because we're back and and a lot of us took the vaccine. Some people see that as the risk, but majority of our employees have gotten the vaccine, which makes a big difference for everyone. So as with all these concerns that we're talking about, that things changing all the still thing in the end, we, we don't want to lose sight of the work that we all are doing here in the district to provide this education. And you, and you have to wait against, and I think we all agree, being out for a year was tough for a lot of people. But we didn't want to force employees to come back to work without any protection. With the vaccine, now we have protection. But that, and and everyone is doing it now because we know that students on site in campus are getting high just then reading math and arithmetic. We talk about that social and and social emotional health that you get by coming to campus and being around your peers and having adults that care about symptoms and and other areas that they can help you, right? So it's not a perfect world, it's never going to be. We're just doing the best that we can. And we can always do better and we always take suggestions, but I think to this point, we've done a great job. We talked about expectation. I give them a little leniency. This is a brand new world. This business didn't exist until COVID came about, right? So like I said, it's not perfect, but we can, we're going to continue doing good. And the good thing is that I think state and the federal government provide us with the funding to come back the right way. So I just hope we maintain our calmness and keep moving in the right direction. We don't know which way it's going to go in terms of the variants that are out there, but we're going to respect. And number one is always going to be making sure that we look out for the health and welfare of our students, employees and our parents and community. Thank you.
Dr. Flores?
Yes, my question was, remembered it. Does co, does contract tracing mean getting tested?
No, so contact tracing is determining proximity and from a positive case.
And notifying people that you were next to someone.
Yes. Now, now, part of that notification, part of that conversation with them will be the availability of testing now. So that'll be part of it.
So what if somebody who was around that person has symptoms? Will they get tested?
Yes, so they'll, so they'll be, any, anyone with symptoms, it's a PCR test, not a rapid test because they're exhibiting symptoms, so they would get a PCR.
What does that mean?
The lab test.
So the lab, that goes to the lab.
Goes to the lab, about 24 hour turnaround, and they would go home because they're symptomatic.
So what if a kid or employee believes they suspect that they, that they may have COVID? Can they go, can they get tested?
Yes.
Okay, so what do they need to do? Just go up to the, to the liaison and say, I'm having symptoms, I need to be tested?
Yes, and then so they, they can be PCR tested if they're exhibiting symptoms, they could get their PCR test and they would be sent home because they're exhibiting symptoms. The good thing is, is it would be able to give them back their results. So instead of sending somebody who's symptomatic, go find a county site, we're able to provide that to them right then and there and then get them their results back within 24 hours.
My next and last question, do teachers, I mean, do our employees know this and do our kids know this? Do they go and ask to get tested if they're feeling symptoms?
I, I can't speak to if everybody knows that, but I I do believe we've messaged that out and we will continue to message that out.
Do you really think we need a message campaign that is, you know, that is informative because it's, I mean, this is so serious. I mean, I, I mean, a parent told me that her son is in the hospital. I mean, that's sad.
Yeah.
You know? That's very sad. So it's a high school kid. So I hope that we do, if I get a report that we're not, I will let you know.
Please.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Eric. We're now going to move into our sanitation update. Welcome.
Good evening, board. Good evening, community. My name is Sam Priest, administrator of operations, and I'm just going to be covering the disinfection of our school sites and what our current condition is. So as we've known and as we've heard many times, you know, there's shortages of staff and different various roles. Our custodial team is not immune to that. We are also suffering some shortages, but working with our P C. Commission, Irma Garcia, and also with our H R. Folks, thank you, Dr. Funchess and Alexis. We've been able to tackle quite a few of those vacancies that the district has had. And as of this morning, we are down to nine vacancies, which is really great because we're up to close to over 30 vacancies in our custodial ranks. In addition to some of our vacancies that we've been challenged weeks, we've also been seeing a very high call off rate. So anywhere between 26 to 65 openings that we've had on a nightly basis, which has led to some sites not being able to receive some of the sanitizing and disinfection of the classroom. I've heard regarding some of those complaints. As a result of hearing about some of these issues as it came to operations, we then consulted with our human resources folks, our business services team, and we also met with our S B. T. A. President, C. A. President to discuss options, opportunities, different things that we can go ahead and introduce to tackle this issue immediately because we recognize that we didn't want to have classrooms that would continue on with, without disinfection. We did all agree on unanimously, working with these different groups, was utilization of our existing workforce in an overtime capacity. So bringing in our evening custodians for up to four hours early and having our day shift and mid shift custodians hours later, as well as opening up the weekend for overtime. To overcome some of the hurdles that we may see with some of the sites, we also had some discussions with business services to open up the funding opportunity. So this overtime isn't going to be a hurdle for the sites or a burden that the sites have to bear. So it's going to be all covered by district funds. We've already worked with our human resources folks, with M and O. Staff as well on a tracking system. This way we can make sure that all the overtime is properly accounted for. We've opened it up for all custodians of all ranks and positions, even if they're in a different capacity, but they were trained as a custodian in a prior role. We've even had a couple of people volunteer nutrition services. So thank you, Adrian, for allowing your custodians, prior custodians to help us out in this environment. But we've had a large number of custodians that have volunteered over this last week. I think this morning we had 22 volunteers that have been and helped out the district in this time of need, which is fantastic that we're able to have our own staff. And this is something that was really important with our union folks was having our own opportunities within our district to solve this district issue. And that we're able to meet all the needs. Today, we had 19 openings after all of our call offs, including the nine vacancies. And our centralized M and O. Staff with the overtime folks were able to sanitize. So tomorrow morning, every single classroom is going to be completely disinfected as well as trash and restrooms. So we did recognize that this was an issue. We tackled it using multiple departments and working closely with our union representatives on implementing the plan immediately. I think we had the approval within the same day of actually coming to resolution with our union folks on the actual rollout. So we're actually in a very good position right now and human resources continue to fill those nine vacancies. And it is a challenge and I really applaud them for that because a lot of other folks have not had that, that success rate with filling their open vacancies. In addition to that, I just wanted to cover our. In addition to that, I just wanted to cover our multi-disinfectant. So it is one of the 13 chemicals that's listed on the EPA N-list. I think I've mentioned that in prior board meetings. But it is very effective against the SARS-CoV-2 virus, and it kills the virus within 30 seconds of contact. And it's also very effective against the norovirus, HIV, influenza A and B virus, K9 parvovirus. So there's many viruses and many different types of organisms that this chemical is very effective in. It's a hospital-grade and also, like I said, EPA N-list. This chemical is our multipurpose cleaner and disinfectant. So it's also been approved to be used in our electrostatic sprayers. So we have both the backpack and the handheld sprayers that our custodians have all been trained on and are able and do utilize on a weekly basis. The sanitizing of our or disinfection of our spaces are being performed on a daily basis. So I don't want to get the confusion of a weekly utilization of our electrostatic sprayers and the daily disinfection. Different things, they're accomplishing the same thing, two different processes that our custodians are trained on. But some of the feedback I've received from some of our school sites and through SBTA has been a confusion of that process, thinking that we're only disinfecting once a week, and that is not true. Daily, and that includes all high touchpoints, and that's going to be our door handles, light switches, panic door hardware, handrails, drink and fountains, restrooms. Those are the areas that are going to be considered to be high touchpoints.
How about desks?
Are not considered to be high touchpoint because they're only being touched by up to seven folks, but those are being sanitized, in fact, disinfecting tonight. That's part of the disinfection of the classroom spaces.
The surfaces?
Yeah. So again, that's two different things, the high touchpoints for the overall cleaning spaces, which is what the desk would be considered.
And the teachers' lounges?
Yeah.
Or the lunchrooms, because I know there was some issues when it came to, you have so many refrigerators per staff, there's microwaves and all of that.
Yeah, those are going to be disinfected on a daily basis as well.
And how many, because, I'm sorry, so I'll let you finish and I'll ask some more questions.
Sure. Actually, that's the end of the presentation.
Okay, so you covered the frequency. You're done with that? Nothing else to say on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Ms. Rosales Medina?
Yes, when it comes to the high-frequency cleaning, how many staff now do we have that's going to be designated for each school site to ensure that that's happening? And I'm glad to hear that we were able to get more people on board, which is amazing because I know it was pretty scary when I heard some of the numbers last week. So how many do we have now that's going to be at each site?
That varies. And I don't want to sound elusive, but that varies based off the, what we utilize, our district is a CASBO ratio. So it looks at a number of different factors to determine the number of custodians and number of custodial hours. So we look at square foot of students, the number of classrooms, the number of indoor square foot, number of outdoor square foot. So there's a large number of different items that we looked at, and that then will determine how many custodians we have at each site. So typically, on an elementary, and I'll just use a ballpark, one in the daytime and two in the evening. Some sites will have one in the evening, some will have one and a half. So it could be a full shift, eight-hour person or a four-hour person. Your middle schools are going to be in that probably four to five range, and your high schools are going to be anywhere 12 range. It really depends on the square footage. So like in Arroyo Valley, a fairly large, high-square-footage-type campus is going to be in the 12. Pacific will probably be in the eight.
That's a lot of custodians.
So it really depends on the site.
Yeah, so then we have, you said that we do have all of the school sites.
Yeah, the only vacancies we have throughout all custodial is nine vacancies. We have about 220, actually, no, I'm sorry, I think it's 285 total custodians. So we're nine short. So it's looking really good.
But it's not going to be, is it impacting right now with those nine that are missing?
Yeah, the nine missing is not impacting us because we have also a centralized maintenance and operations custodial team, so we're able to deal with those nine vacancies. The areas that's more impactful right now for us is going to be the call-offs. So we're experiencing a very high call-off, and that's going to be your illnesses, your vacations, sick days, things like that. But we're able to, through this new program, we are able to deal with all those call-offs.
And will they be notified? Let's just say that a few call-off the next day, how will that process, because you know you're going to have to have someone at the site to ensure that you do have someone. So I'm just, otherwise, if you don't have someone, then what are the next steps, too?
Yeah, definitely. Working with our human resources folks, working with MNO, we also have a system where people will call into and say, "I'm going to be calling in for tomorrow, so I won't be showing up." They can then reach out for those individuals that have already signed up on our overtime list and also on our ability-to-call-in list. So then at that point, they'll issue their assignment and then they'll be deployed to that particular work site. If it's something that's very short notice, we all have maintenance and operations centralized service. For instance, this morning, we had our two custodians at our MNO office that were deployed, and they were working, I think, at five different sites today, just to make sure that they all had service.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Flores?
Sam, how do we know that everything's being wiped down?
How do you, well, that's a good question. I trust the custodians that we have out there to perform the run sheets. They have run sheets. We have supervisors that follow up with them. We also have custodial leads at the high schools and at custodians two at the middle schools, which run points. So if there's any issues regarding cleanliness or performance of duties, the custodial two, custodial threes, the custodial supervisors will follow up.
The reason I'm asking is that, I'm not saying I don't trust them. I'm just saying that it's so important that things get wiped down, and I do know for a fact, and teachers have told me, that they wipe their own stuff down because somehow a custodian missed their classroom. And so that's the reason I ask.
Yeah, you know, a couple of weeks ago, I would say you're right on board with that because we had so many vacancies. Our central is not able to accommodate all those sites. So I would definitely say, yeah, that was true a couple of weeks ago, but we fixed that through this process. We recognized that was an issue.
And you know, I was a high school teacher, and you know, you have, I think, our over 200 kids a day. And so, you know, I do know that some teachers have the kids wipe their area before they leave because it's impossible for, you know, a custodian to do that. But I just want you to know that teachers are doing that and to protect the kids and protect, you know, the next ones that come. But they are doing that, you know, and bless them, you know, because that is, but I do know our teachers are doing that. I don't know how widespread it is, but I do know they're doing that. So you should know that.
Mr. Tillman?
So how do you define the safety in terms of, you know, keeping doors closed versus having doors open, Mr. Viter, for airflow? Are we having doors open now? What are we doing?
That's a great question. I think in the heat and with our, you know, the general safety protocols that we have, the doors are closed. However, that's why we put the HEPA units inside the rooms, the HEPA filters that are in each and every classroom. We were one of the first districts in the state was because we saw that, that we weren't going to be able to keep air conditioning running, to keep the schools at, you know, we're in the desert. So keeping the schools at a comfortable temperature, keeping the safety impacts that we face in our community with security issues are closed, and also having the conflict with COVID and air being filtered. And so putting those into the rooms has allowed us to keep those doors closed.
And all of our rooms have them?
I just wanted to add on to that item. You mentioned we're one of the first districts in the nation, and we were actually spotlighted in the, for making that decision very early on. But in addition to keeping the doors closed and utilizing the HEPA units, we also have our air systems, basically your HVAC system that's up on the roof, outside air. So typically, like in your home, you're just recirculating the same air that's in your house over and over again, and you're just cooling it down. But what we're doing is we're pulling an outside air. We have our dampers fully open. So, and that's one of the requirements or one of the recommendations in CDC as well as CDPH, is to maximize your outdoor air. So in those situations where you can't open doors or open windows, utilize your outside air. And all of our systems have our dampers fully open and we're maximizing our outdoor air.
I think, did you get your question answered about, is it at every site?
Do they have the, what do you call it, HEPA?
Yeah, the HEPA units are basically medical-grade air scrubbers.
Are they in every classroom?
They are. Yeah, they're in 1,500 square foot models for our 960 square foot classrooms.
Thank you.
Great, great. And I think that's all of the questions, and just lastly, I'll add to what's been said rather than repeat it, but our teachers also need to know, you know, it's great, and they're going to have those opportunities to go over and above, and I applaud those that are doing it. However, that the role of the custodian, I hope that there is some form of reporting when it is not, because it's quicker and better for you all to know that they will call us, and we appreciate that. And I appreciate you guys getting on top of this because it was coming into all of us on a regular, and I was in, you know, the superintendent's ear, and you guys have responded quickly, and I appreciate that. But I also want you guys, if you just let the teachers know that they should be reporting these things to you without feeling that, you know, they're doing something wrong. If their class was missed, the quicker they tell you that, the better. And so there should be some reporting methods or, again, information going. Please let us know that immediately, rather than just let the students come in or just try to do it themselves.
That's right. I do want to mention that, you know, we had a conversation internally, and we did mention about all the different communication process that we send out, but then in that process, that we didn't send anything out to the teachers, and we're like, whoa, we missed a big component of this.
Right.
So it's one of those lessons learned that we felt like we were communicating well, but then when we did, you know, a 360 eval on that whole process, we realized that we missed a very critical component of that.
Thank you for that. Our questions, and we're now going to the Virtual Academy.
All right, thank you very much. Hello, everyone. What Danny Tillman just said earlier really resonated. You know, we are all trying to work on this together. This is unprecedented time, and we don't, and that's okay. We have to look for solutions. And so as we're looking at our Virtual Academy, we've been writing updates weekly on the number of enrollment and the number of students who are on the interest list. And as you can see there, we have 1,800 students enrolled. That enrollment does change very regularly. We also have an interest list of over 1,000 students. And so we know that with the COVID variant coming, parents are scared. They're very nervous, and they're, Academy to be that place where they will feel safe. The issue right now in our quest to reduce that interest list is the number of staff. And so at this time, looking at the 1,800 students that we have enrolled, you can see we have 27 guest teachers, four counselors. And if you're looking at that number and then looking at the interest number of over 1,000, you're looking at almost that same number, again, for this, to meet the need of that. So we thank the parents who are on that interest list. We ask you to be patient with us and also to work with your schools so that you can get the short-term independent study and look for how you can continue your education, diligently working daily to hire teachers for us. The teachers that are at the Virtual Academy have been so wonderful and patient. They're hardworking and they're trying their best. Overall, we think, you know, are there, yes. Do we get to a rocky start? Yes. Were there things that we needed to get better at? Yes. Have we been doing that? Yes, we have. And every response that, you know, when board members call, superintendent, or I receive those calls, we respond within minutes to be able to resolve those issues with parents. And so we continue to look for creative solutions. We're soliciting information from the county to see how we can reduce the numbers and get more, the Virtual Academy, but it continues to be a work in progress, and we appreciate your patience. And more than anything, we appreciate the parents and the families out there who we know are, really want their kids in school, and we're doing our best to make sure that they can get. Thank you.
All right, and Dr. Rodriguez, before you leave, I'm not seeing any questions, but I will, okay, Dr. Wyatt has a question.
Yes, sir.
And thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, on the presentation. So the kids, the students, excuse me, scholars that are on the interest list right now, you were mentioning short-term independent study. Do we know approximately how many of them are on that or how many are physically still attending school?
No, we know that many parents have the understanding, if they're putting themselves on the interest list, they don't have to go to school. So that message is not the case. So students should be working with their principals, be working with their teachers to get packet work, Google Classroom assignments, so that they can keep on their studies. And so we're working with principals to let them know what is the protocol for that, let them know what the process is for master agreements for students who are on short-term independent study. Talk about this weekly. I meet with Virtual Academy admin at least twice a week. Every Friday, we have kind of the meeting of the minds with representatives from all divisions to talk about how, what are we doing with staffing? What are we doing for professional development? How are we, to families? Special education has been a major component of this because we want to make sure that we're offering this opportunity to all students. And so we know that there are challenges with meeting the needs of special education students, but we continue to.
And that was going to be my next question on breakdown on the students that are, one, enrolled and then also students on the interest list, but right now enrolled, what, how many of them are like elementary school, approximately middle school, high school, with disabilities?
So we can provide that in the Friday update. I'll give you a breakdown by, we have it by grade level. We also have by special program, and we'll provide that to you in Friday update. You're welcome.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Yes, I was wondering, how are we, this is basically a waiting list, right?
Correct.
And so then how are we going to start eliminating that waiting list? And then also looking at for, in the future is, because I know we do have the dual, right now for students who are, school sites that are saving their spots and revisit that, the only reason why I'm saying that is that there's classes that are being impacted, in-person classes that are being impacted by that as well. But meantime, what are we doing to eliminate that waiting list?
So Dr. Funchess in HR is working on filling positions. And so the only way we can eliminate students from the interest list is to hire additional teachers. He's also working on, and I don't want to, also working on transfers of teachers where we have low numbers of students at schools. And so the only way for us to reduce that interest list is to hire more teachers. And I don't know if you want to add anything, Dr. Funchess, to that?
Yeah, I'll only add this. So the transfers can happen in two different ways. Number one, where there are students that have been reduced at a school site, so that we can take teachers from those sites. However, we have to be careful because there are reserved seats at those schools as well. So we have to take a look. And then the voluntary transfer process, which we did open up, but we have to backfill those positions. So we're in the process of doing that now. We feel like during the month of September, we'll make sure that we put a good dent into this and be able to accept some of those scholars that are on the waiting list into, at least that's our goal, to get most of those students going as we hire and transfer teachers into the Virtual Academy.
But if there's special situations where there's a dire need, maybe because they're having some, are we setting priority lists or is there, you know, like a transition, you know, before you get accepted, then at least we'll put you independent study? Is there like a process for that? I'm just curious to see if maybe there was anything thought for those special?
As we hear about special cases, we do know that there have been some, that we had a situation where we had a parent pass away, and they were living with a guardian, and they had to move to a different site, and they had to, a parent was, I'm having, the guardian was having the students go to counseling. And so we have to work with kids. Those are some of the very neediest situations. They don't come up often, but we do address them as they come. We want to make sure that we're semblance of, we're not doing preferential treatment for people on that list. And so there is some misunderstandings. It's like first in, first on the list, first in a class. That's not always the case. So what we're looking for is depending on the grade level, then those are the students that we pull off the list, as well as their sibling, so that the whole family can go into the Virtual Academy. So it's all dependent on the type of teacher that we get, the grade level of the teacher, so that we can then put students.
Okay, great. And I'd like to, in the future, maybe have a presentation of what, and I know it would be too long for this one, what an actual, what does it look like for a student entering and, because a lot of parents... What an actual, what does it look like for a student entering and, because a lot of parents, it seems like. On social media that, you know, they thought it would be like how it was during COVID and apparently it's not.
It is not.
And so I do want to have maybe, even if it's a brief agenda item with regards to what the academy looks like. Update. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Tillman?
And I guess just so everyone's aware, Mr. Dr. Funchess, so how hard is it to get teachers right now? Is it almost impossible? Because I've heard of schools that are closing down. I read the news because they have a shortage of substitutes and shortage of teachers. Is it that bad here?
There's a challenge to get high-quality educators just because of the substitute teacher and teacher shortage. Good. Tap into the teachers that we have, the existing staff, and then also pull from our substitute teacher ranks for temporary contracts. But it is a challenge. I will say that just because of the quality of educators due to the teacher shortage.
And Dr. Just explain the numbers to me because when I take the 1830 and divided by the 100 teachers, are there guest teachers? Do they have their own class? Are they really substituting for the teachers in your academy?
No, those are in addition. So those are teachers. So we have. And then we have 27 teachers that are subs that we're waiting to hire those 27 teachers.
So you don't have them yet?
No, we don't have, they're not full-fledged teachers yet.
Some of the, some of those guest teachers are being. Teacher of record right now.
But really, the, right now, the average class size is about 26?
Well, we have to, we have to abide by contract class sizes.
Based on grades?
Yes.
That makes it tougher. Not fill up K through third grade.
Right. So we can't staff them all the same. And even though they have, I don't want to say less of a, of a, of a job because it is a big job. That their, their workload has to mirror what it is in a regular, for a regular teacher.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you so much. And we're going to move, but Dr. Rodriguez.
You're welcome.
For your presentation. And I know you guys are going to be doing a town hall, but I think it's very important, if not tonight, it is so important for individuals throughout our community to understand the difference between distance education and independent study and what the. And I know, and Ms. Rosales Medina mentioned on that and I checked it, but I do want to emphasize that because I'm answering that question quite often. Everyone believes that what we did in 2020, you know, asynchronous. Is what Virtual Academy is. There's a lot of misconception about that. And we got to clear that up. That's why I think some of the questions are coming in is can we go back to that? You know, and we know there's legislation that is not there right now. And many of us. Our legislators to try to discuss that and they're looking at it. We're talking about it from our board, from those, our lobbyists and whatnot. But that has to be clarified because most of the people that I talk to believe that Virtual Academy. Of the name is distance education. And it's supposed to look like 2020 and not independent study. So, you know, I know the night is prolonged tonight, but it has to be clarified in the town halls and going forward. And at our next. As Ms. Rosales Medina was asking for update, we need to show what it really is because it's not distance education. And I've, and people, you know, slip up of the tongue and they call it that. And that takes us back to 2020 and this is not that.
Right. It's their. Something that they're familiar with.
Yeah, exactly.
Not understanding what the guidelines of the law are.
Absolutely. Dr. Flores?
Just wanted to thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, for stabilizing the Virtual Academy. I know you had a rough start, but it looks like, you know, you're on a. Ready state and, and just that you have 27 teachers, you know, in the wing. Dr. Funchess, are they going to be ready soon? Or I know you're onboarding them or whatever.
Yeah. The ones that we are hiring right now, just going through the background process because it's an additional step to bring them on as a teacher. So they are in that process. And those that we will be offering contracts to in terms of temporary contracts. So that's probably a few. As we go through the hiring process.
I know. How many more teachers would we need for, for the interest list? For the 1,175?
Probably at least 35 to 40.
How many?
At least 30.
35 to 40 more? Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. It was definitely a team effort. It was all hands on deck. So thank you very much. I'd like to now bring up Dr. Esquivel. Thank you.
Good evening. So as we strike a very critical balance between the safety and health and welfare of our community, we are also of. Training instruction. We are meeting the kids every single day. So we do have a teaching and learning update. And I will be sharing this slide with my colleague, Mrs. Applegate. So first off, I will start off with the program evaluation. Board, last month, you provided the green light to bring in and partner with Great Gains. Here I am providing a quick update on what that work will, really will encompass for the next few months. Great Gains has been really conducting a series of equitable reviews and audits and evaluations that are specific to the various service agreements that we have across the district. For the past few weeks, they have been focused on our CAPS. And of course, as we begin the school year and bring on new leadership to work with our Student Services Division, we're very eager to really think about the scopes and services and protocols that each agreement has. That of course, there's a return on that investment by each provider. So that is priority number one. Priority number two is taking a deep dive on our college readiness outlook. Really looking at our A through G and our pathway work really closely. Our counselors and our high school principals. So that is number two on the evaluative priority list. And number three, our program evaluators are working closely with our Ed Services team and Ms. Applegate. Look at our curriculum guides in grades three through 11. And then lastly, on the STEAM side, we're really excited as part of the Listening and Learning Tour that our superintendent is currently conducting. We have a meeting greet. Next Wednesday evening. This meeting greet will bring visual arts, performing arts, CTE, engineer, link learning and technology teachers that are currently within our system to shed light on the amazing work that they're currently leading across their schools. And as we of course envision a district with CAPS offering with STEAM programming and we also envision STEAM academies across. We know that these current teachers, current educators that are engaging in the work will be pivotal to really shed light on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Esquivel. To finish up with my passion, all of our passion, which is teaching and learning. So we save the fun stuff for last. And I just want to assure you that earlier, I know Mr. Tillman mentioned how we're having so many challenges. But I wanted to first of all, thank our staff. I really want to thank our classified. Our site leaders. It's amazing the Herculean effort that's being put forth right now during all this, all this pandemic. So what I wanted to do is just talk a little bit about coming into the classrooms, watching the kids is just invigorating to all of us. I know that we go in classroom. But this is why we do what we do. So one of the first things that we're doing is we're making sure that we're assessing all of our students in language arts and math. We want to know exactly where every, each and every student is. And we are using our new assessment, the NWEA assessments to determine that. Get that information. We actually have a site leader tomorrow, a site leader meeting tomorrow where our site leaders will be delving into their reports and their data to see where their kids are. And they're going to really start brainstorming and working together and working with our divisions to plan some instructional plans for their. Forward. We want to make sure we recapture learning and we accelerate learning as well. And in order to do that, we want to support our sites with a multi-tiered system of support. That's the structure that's going to allow our sites to provide really effective tier-one instruction for all of our students. Adding those additional layers for our students that need additional assistance, not only in academics, but also also social, emotional behavior and mental health. So that's what we're embarking on right now. And the service delivery model, we feel will really help us to accomplish that goal. We're starting to deploy a personnel that we already have in place to the clusters to make sure that we're getting the services down to the school sites. So we're excited about what's coming and we want to also highlight what's happening in teaching and learning on your Friday updates. So look forward to seeing some of those updates about what's happening. We'll be bringing that to you every week. Okay?
Thank you. That was it?
That's it. Yeah.
Dr. Flores?
And Mrs. Applegate. So the assessment that you're conducting, then I assume that that's a a starting point, right, for everybody, for the teachers so that they know where their kids are? Is that correct?
Wide assessment, that is correct. Many sites have already done some assessments at the very beginning of the year. But this is our new district-wide assessment so that we have assessments on all our students.
So how will they use that data?
So they'll be tomorrow, our principals. Receiving reports on every one of their students. So the NWEA will assess students' personal growth, where they are, their personal level, and then how far they are from grade level mastery. So we'll get those two sets of data on our students.
That's good.
They'll be working with their. Our teachers are absolutely key. Obviously, they're the ones that are going to be teaching. So they'll be working with their school teams to really analyze that data and then start planning some instructional, you know, opportunities for our students to make sure they accelerate.
ASAP comes in. Will come in in terms of instructional guidance?
Many of the resources that we've identified in ASAP are to support the instruction that's going to be happening.
Instruction in that?
Yes, that's correct. A lot of digital curriculum, you know, we have additional personnel in ASAP, many. As well for our students to learn.
And our teachers are familiar with that?
Yes, yes, they are familiar. And our site leaders also will be getting more information as well.
And then remind us what the. Says is.
That's the multi-tiered systems of support. That's a framework that we use to make sure that all of our students are getting their needs met. So we start with a basic tier, which is effective tier-one instruction for all of our students. Whether they're an English learner or a special ed. Should be effective instruction for all of our students. And that's the core content instruction. And then we also make sure that we provide interventions even within that first structure and then adding additional tiers, not instead of.
This is the tier.
Yes, adding a second tier and then. On our student needs.
And how effective has that been?
I'm sorry?
How, how effective has that been?
We are embarking on making sure that there's a district understanding, district-wide. I know that we've had cohorts that have been trained pretty deeply. But now we're really looking at a whole district approach so that there's a good understanding by all of our, our site leaders and our school sites.
And will this be part of the, of the program evaluation of curriculum and instruction? What, I don't understand. Instruction is being evaluated.
Right now, currently, Great Gains, the company that Dr. Esquivel was referring to, is auditing our curriculum guides. Are the scope and sequences that we have.
The scope and sequence?
Yes.
Are those scope and sequence tied to the ASAP?
The scope and sequences are the sets of standards that we're addressing over a certain period of time. And it has instructional strategies and it has all the resources for our teachers. The ASAP are really the resource. In order for teachers to be able to teach that curriculum guide.
Are those the ones that were co-constructed with teachers?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay, that we spent like two and a half years doing?
Yes, that's correct. In conjunction with UCLA.
With UCLA, okay. Okay. And so the teachers are familiar with them?
Yes, they are. They had in-depth training during distance learning because we basically were using the curriculum guides as our framework to make sure that we had equitable experiences for all of our kids during distance learning.
And across all the curriculum, across all.
Content areas, all the grade levels. That's correct.
Great. Thank you.
All right. All right. I think that's, that's good. Okay, so board, we're going down the home stretch. So like.
Closing us out.
Thank you very much.
So, um, board, so just, that was just a simple update, quite a few questions around COVID. And, you know, we want to assure the board that we are committed to getting better when it comes. Related to the health and safety. We're educators. That's what we went to school to do. That's what we've been doing for all of our careers. And so this pandemic is something that's definitely very new for all of us. We're not medical experts by any means, but we know how to keep children safe. Communicate. And so we'll keep doing that and we'll keep working with our partners. We're very thankful that we have AMLLC. Other districts don't have anything. And so they've been trying to do the work of educating and do the work of COVID. And other districts, friends who are doing their own contact tracing. I can't even imagine what that is like for those, for those schools. So although we're not perfect, we never will claim that we are. We are doing a lot more for our schools and our staff. And in other districts. And so we're ahead of the game. We're going to keep getting better with it. And we, we ask for the patience. We appreciate the guidance, but know that we are committed to keeping people safe. Those guiding principles that we put in place last school year have not. The only difference is now we get to put them into practice in our schools rather than trying to do it at home, right? And, and so we will keep doing that. In addition, Mr. Urban will continue his listening and learning tour, gathering input from the community in different ways. We'll be bringing in. Board in November, December-ish to then start really planning for what next school year will look like in terms of implementation. So planning will really start in January for what our big transformation in terms of our educational program for. We thank you for your questions. They always help us to get better. Again, please know we are very committed to this work. But by no means are we experts in this arena. Nobody is. And so we have to all work together and, and it is somewhat of a. Areas, but then we, we take the practices we know, which is to plan, do, study, act. And when we see things need to improve, we do that. So thank you.
I just do have one more comment. And this is regarding the Virtual Academy when it comes to the teachers that. Here and I believe, and you know, someone messaged me regarding they have a teacher that was approved. But sometimes it's also creates conflict at the school sites where they're leaving and the principal may not want to let them leave. So it's just putting it out there that. Other internal issues and how we have to work around that. But definitely help support those teachers that may prefer the virtual because of health conditions. And so giving them the opportunity to do so.
Thank you, Ms. Medina.
Okay, I think those are all the comments. Thank you so much. Thank you all for a thorough presentation. And we look forward for continued updates. Board, we are, we are down the home stretch, but can we take two, two, two to three minutes bio break? Stand-up stretch and then we can finish it up. All right, we are all back now. All right. So we are going to move now to 10.1 board member, 10.0 reports and comments, starting with 10.1 board members. And we'll start to my right, Mr. Tillman, and we'll come on down. Okay, no, on Mr. Tillman and.
I was.
Mike? Okay, we can hear you.
Oh, I was at the Quality California Leadership Summit last week. And this is where all LGBTQ elected officials, this is like one of their unique ones that they have within the. And this is city council members, water board members, school board members. And then of course, we had a chance to speak and really address some of the issues that we're seeing at our local sites to the state legislators. The LGBTQ caucus, Legislative Caucus, all the senators and, and assembly members that were there present. So it was really nice to have that opportunity to speak to them directly on some of the issues that I feel, I felt. And one of them was in particular, the, the counseling and the social, emotional help. And then also bringing the funds necessary for us to really do the work. It's one thing that, you know, we, we do receive some funds, but. So many things going on that it doesn't seem like it's sufficient. And so that was some of the things that we were, were advocating and talking about during that time. So it's really nice to try to talk to other board members that were there present and to see what they're. And experiencing now that we're back in school at the site. Other than that, that was my.
Thank you for reporting. I know you were going, so thank you for coming back and reporting. Sometimes we forget to report, but thank you.
It was a one-day thing. And what I liked about that one was all, you had to show proof of vaccination and you also had to take a negative test.
Even go to show. Okay, thank you. Dr. Flores?
Yes, I have only two items tonight. And the first one is I really think we need to take in. And the first one is, I really think we need to take an employee survey of their experience with our COVID protocols. And I only have five questions. How do you feel that your site is complying with safety regulations? Two, how safe do you feel? Three, how can we improve for COVID? Four, how effective do you think our COVID systems are working? And five, do you trust or know what it is on, and their duties and responsibilities? So I can give this to you, Ginger, on the way out, but these are, I could give it to you before. So those, I think that barometer pulse on what our employees are feeling, because, I mean, I would like to do it with our students, but I think we should start with our employees. It's good feedback for us to see if we're on the mark, you know? So anyway. And then yesterday, you know, you guys know I'm a reader, and I think, I don't know how many newspapers I read a day, but anyway. But yesterday in the Washington Post, because it was, you know, Labor Day, they wrote an incredible article on Ms. Nanny Helen Burrows, and the title is "On Labor Day, We Remember the Black Women Who Helped Win Labor Rights." A hundred years ago, Nanny Helen Burrows launched the National Association of Wage Earners, integrated comprehensive labor reform into the movement for voting rights. As we celebrate Labor Day, let's remember the black women who helped make this day possible. This year marks the 100th anniversary of the National, of the National Association of Wage Earners, a little-known but important black women's labor organization of the early 20th century. Although the labor movement is often credited to white male industrial workers, female organizers who more than a century ago recognized that bettering the lives of working people required dismantling systemic racial class and gender inequalities in all institutions. They believed that the single most important pathway would be to, would be equal access to the ballot box. And so true then as it is today. And I'll just read a little bit more. Upon launching NAWE in 1921, Nanny Helen Burrows, educator, organizer, and later a mentor, later a mentor to Reverend Martin Luther King Jr., crafted the groundbreaking national agenda to integrate comprehensive labor reform into the movement for voting rights. In the prophetic 1915 article in the Crisis Newspaper, Burrows declared that when the ballot is put into the hands of the American woman, the world is going to get a correct estimate of the Negro woman, and I would add, all women. "Find her a tower strength of which poets have never sung, orders have never spoken, and scholars have never written." So honored, Ms. Nanny Helen Burrows. Thank you.
Dr. Flores, Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I just want to thank our executive cabinet members for the updates that we're experiencing. And did, I did have a question come in from the public and wanted to thank Dr. Rodriguez for answering that for me in regards to, just found out that our athletes, our student athletes, have to wear masks during practice and their games now, which I thought was interesting. CIF and California Department of Public Health. So, you know, new update that our athletes are now having to wear masks during practice and their games. I think there were some exemptions, you said wrestling, and was there any other sports that there were exemptions for?
Swimming.
And swimming. I do appreciate those updates, and that's it for me on Board comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hill?
Dr. Rogers. Just want to remind all of you that October 6 is Labor Day, and we had a meeting today, and we off to a good start. We want everybody to participate and sign the pledge, which is on the website, but we also hoping that everybody can make a commitment in order to participate in that. But again, it's October the 6th. Just want to say to our students, we are so glad to have you back in school, but we want to keep you there, so please stay safe. Take the decisions you're making today, because I know you probably won't believe this, because I probably didn't believe it when I was 14, 15, 16 either, but the things you do today is certainly going to affect you tomorrow. And I'm, and the reason I decided to bring that up, I got a call today from one of my former graduates of over 20 years ago, who was in a position to get a very good job, and because of something he did in high school, you know, he's just in his 30s, on the phone crying, because it's the only thing held him back was something he had done 20-some years ago, at least 20 years ago. So just, again, take a look at your options and know if it's not good, it can come back. If it's good, you want it to come back. And just want to say to the staff, thank you for looking out for our students. We appreciate all you do, the teachers, the clerks, the custodians, cafeteria workers. You're part of the team, and, and we do appreciate you. Tara, Ms. Hill, thank you and Dave for coming in to do workshop with us on norms and protocols. You know, we, even with as much as we know, we always learn something every time there's professional development. So really appreciate you giving us your time. And Mr. Urban in Cabinet, just want to say what I always say, I just appreciate you. And again, being in the field of education, when I look at all that you have to deal with, I'm just amazed that we are as far as we are. People say we are better than most districts. I know why. I know why, because you're doing it with a lot of compassion from your heart. And from that, I just want to say thanks to all of you. And then, uh, that's pretty it. I hope one of our professional development sessions is how to turn down the air conditioner, so when I leave here and go in the back, you know what I'm doing. So thank you, I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hill. Miss-
I know it's late, so very briefly, again, I just want to say thank you for the presentations. Thank you to Cabinet and the public, everybody that has stuck with us this late. I look forward to having more conversations here on the Board around academic performance of schools and students, where we can spend more time on, on those conversations. And I just want to leave you all with, again, define your culture, or it will define you.
Thank you, Ms. Abelson. I just want to say again, you know, ditto to what everything has been said, it's a lot going on all the time. Everybody is just working, working, working diligently, doing what they need to do, no matter the hour, no matter the time. I don't think the clock stops, you know, because there's that, that desire to just do what needs to get done. I know Dr. Wyatt is constantly, we got to get up for an early meeting tomorrow. We don't think about tomorrow until tomorrow comes, because there's work to be done to the end of the year. So I appreciate, you know, the team and what you're doing. I appreciate the Board members, you know, I appreciate our differences, you know, how we can come together and hear and see and, and then try to do ultimately what we need to do as a Board for what we serve, which is everyone that's a part of the Seminole City Unified School District, as I like to refer to it, as a family. And so let's just continue to keep our eye on doing what we need to do, and we will continue to reach success. I'm grateful for that, and that's, that's really what I want to say. And then lastly, this is kind of a personal shout-out, but I do want to say, you know, my husband may or may not be watching, because it is late, but there is 26 roses that he sent to me here at the Board, because I crossed paths today. Yesterday, I celebrated 26 years of a wedding anniversary. So I'm grateful for that. I'm so grateful that we, through all of this, 26 years, we're here healthy, and all of our family is. Thank you all. We're now going to move to 10.2 Superintendent and Staff.
I just wanted to say very quickly, again, thanks for the retreat earlier today, the Board Study Session. And secondly, continue to move forward with the Listening and Learning Tour, trying to learn as much as we can about the district, and we're going to continue with our pathway forward. So that's all I have this evening.
Thank you so much. We're now moving to 11.0 Action Items. Personnel Report Number Five, dated September 7, 2021, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignation, promotions, and terminations.
As presented, Board?
I'm moved.
You moved it. Did I hear, I heard Mr. Tillman second. You got that? It was Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
If there's no further discussion, we will vote. All right, motion carry, 11.2 Adoption of the Revised 2021-2024 Local Control and Accountability Plan and Federal Addendum Education Service, be it resolved if the Board of Education adopts the Revised 2021-2024 Local Control and Accountability Plan 2019-2020 Summary Update, the 2020-2021 Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan Annual Update, and the 2021-22 in the LCAP Federal Addendum.
A move?
Discussion, please.
Yes, we are now at discussion.
Uh, yes, I have a couple of questions on the, on page 103, Access and Opportunities. It's, shows that $23,772, $70,411 allocated to this category. I'd like to know what, what this category is for.
Dr. Flores, those are the allocations that are pushed out to the school sites?
Go out to the schools?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. And then on page 104, I noticed that, that our bilingual students who are low-income, majority of them, $131,935 allocated to bilingual pro, support of bilingual programs.
And that is specifically just to interpretation and translation services?
Pardon me?
That is specific, and there is just for translation and interpretation. That's the cost just for that. That's not materials or any other thing, no. That's strictly for interpretation.
And then I don't remember the page number. This is the last one. I noticed that for EL kids, given that we have, how many, Ms. Abigat, 17 or 18,000?
I'm sorry, number of English learners? Current usually waivers between 10 and 12,000, but we'll see as of C-bids. But we also have our, our FIP students, so about 17 total.
About 17. So I, I noticed that, I mean, they generate a lot of, and so I wondered why we're only allocating $3 million some, 3.2 million. Why, why is that? Why isn't it more?
It is specific just to English learner. However, our English learners are included in many, many of our other expenditures. They are also included as well. But we definitely can take a look at that as we begin our new LCAP cycle.
As they're the ones, especially our high school EL and our middle school, they're really at, you know, at the low end of, of achievement. And so I just would like, I thank you for that. I think you need to look into it.
Thank you, Dr. Flores.
Okay.
I have some questions as well, only because you brought up these, these slides. And I know this, it says the last year's total planned expenditures, but I'm curious, did we have service delivery, because in page, as an example, page 103, and then as well 104, and then 105, it all has a line item for a service delivery model. Did we have that last year through the district?
No, we did not.
Because there is a line item for 15 million, and then there's another one, professional development, 5 million. So I'm just curious if that was something that we had. I don't know if, would you understand what that means?
So, so this, even though it's labeled planned expenditures, this, these are the current LCAP planned expenditures?
These are the current planned expenditures?
Correct.
And what does that, like, for instance, an example, because like I said, there's like different, 102 as well, it's, let's try that, 102 on number, I think it's the three where it says, per service delivery model directs student, doesn't finish saying the rest. Then there's a professional development, then supplemental. Is, what does that entail then?
So, so in the original LCAP adoption in June, there was direct student support expenditures identified in item 1.2. We see item 1.22, also labeled 22 and 1.23. We recognized when the budget was adopted, the additional, a portion of the additional concentration grant dollars. If you recall, there was debate between the legislature on whether they would increase supplemental or concentration funding to districts. So the district budgeted 12 million at the lower legislative proposal of, of supplement grant increases. So that 12 million dollars, it's reflected in revenue in the budget. So as we were working through the revisions, we have to reflect those dollars in the plan, even though those plans haven't been developed. Because we recognize it as revenue, we also have to recognize it. So when we move forward to the LCAP supplement for those specific dollar uses, then that's where those details of that plan, including stakeholder input, would be in supplement.
So it's not necessarily, it's, it's just, I guess the name change is just there, because it, I just want to make sure not, we're not necessarily approving, have anything to do with the positions. It's more yet, just looking at funding that we already had. We just kind of shift the name from one name to now this name?
So the, so those are, those are, those are LCAP, have assigned expenditures to them. So when we plot the revenues and the expenditures, we're plotting expenditures for those purposes. We do not have current expenditures in those categories yet. So nothing's been assigned there yet.
As a placeholder?
In short, yes.
So this is not for this year?
This is, this is this year's LCAP plan.
So we're not going to implement the service delivery model in full? So will these monies be rolled over?
Oh, the, yeah, so if the, if these expenditures, whether it's this category or any category, if they are not fully expended, they are rolled over for years, LCAP expenditures.
But they're just allocated for now?
Correct.
Okay.
You can see here how it says service delivery model, but then it also says direct student support on one. The other one says service delivery model, but it says professional. And then the third one says service delivery model, but it also says supplemental instructional materials. So that's making sure that we're spending that money in those categories, not necessarily just for that, but we are, these are direct services to students.
So we will expend it?
Your plans right now, moving forward, we don't know exactly what it'll look like, but we have to have the allocation. Mr. Tillman?
This is ongoing expenditures?
They're ongoing expenditures.
And it, it, and we had the discussion, but I just want to ensure that at some point, with this first- with this first interim, second interim, that we, before we create and approve new positions, because it sounds like new positions, that the board approves those positions before we move forward. I'm hoping you're not assuming that if we approve this tonight, that we're approving positions to go with us.
This is, this is an approval of the, associated with the action, not the actual details of that action. I will say that 1.21 was in the adopted budget. The, I'm sorry, was in the adopted LCAP plan in June. Which really is 22 and 23. That's half of the 12.2 million in that additional concentration grant dollars that, again, we will speak to in a future LCAP supplement that will be forward and submitted to the county and the state in February. So that will involve additional stakeholder input. That template is currently, actually, as of tomorrow, is actually going to the State Board of Education for review and comment.
Okay, is that all the comments? All right. Okay, we're ready to vote? Okay, motion carried. Thank you. We're now moving to 11.3 Adoption of Updated Uniform Systems of Pre-Qualifying Perspective Bidders for Certain Construction Projects, Business Services?
A move. Again.
They moved and second. Is there any discussion?
I just noticed, I just noticed there was some misalignment with some of the criteria review. I don't want to divulge it, but I could tell you later.
Okay.
Miss Servant, I can tell you later what I saw. What they meant with. Yeah, what, how they were being evaluated and on what they had to submit. I just saw two, three things.
Okay.
On the construction part?
Yeah, on the construction one. Can, I mean, I don't want to divulge it because then.
Don't want, right.
Well, what we can do is, we can touch base offline.
Right.
Let's get on the same page.
Right.
I'll set something up where you and I can touch base offline.
Yeah. I just noticed there was a misalignment, not big. It's just. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you're okay with that, I'll set something up.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Any other discussion? No, all right, let's vote.
A move.
Did I, did I hear? We had a motion.
I think we already moved.
Okay, I thought so, okay. Yes, you too. Like, wait a minute. Are we all in? No, someone's not in. Mr. Tillman, are you in? Have a, okay.
I tapped on yeah. Way.
All right, motion carried. Thank you. 11.4 Signature Authority and Ravocation Nutrition Services, Business Services?
A move.
Again.
It's been moved and second. Is there any discussion? All right, if not, let us vote. All right, motion carried. Thank you. All right, we're at 12.0 Consent Items. They moved and. All right, we're at the discussion. I do need to pull.
I need to pull several as well.
Okay, let's hear them.
I have 12.4, 12.9, 12.24, and then 12.32.
32. And I'm going to pull 12.25 along with 12.24 and 25. I have three cues. Is there any others? 12.9, 12.24, 12.25, and 12.32. All right.
Which one said you pulled?
12.4, 12.9, 24, 12.25, and 12.32.
2, 25 and what?
32.
And 32, okay, thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and vote on the remainder. All right, motion carried. Thank you. All right, let's start with.
Yeah, so I pulled it because I noticed that the contract with Thor Run Partner has, it's from Washington DC. And who do we have currently? In that area? Who would answer that one?
Are you talking legislator or the actual Thorn Run representative?
Sorry, I'm sorry, the, the LCC.
So Jim Davenport presenting us at the federal level through Thorn Run.
Is there any, any reason? Also, they're the ones currently.
They are, they are current legislative advocacy at the federal level.
Renewing the contract? Is that what it is?
We've worked with them for many years, and we just renewed the contract.
I just noticed that, okay.
Myself and Mr. Sullins met with him, had a long conversation, and we had some clarity about what we were. He agreed, and so we just renewed his contract.
Okay, so, so second. Right, it's been moved and second. If there's no further discussion, we can go ahead and vote. All right, 12.9.
This one, I was looking at the free, free, students assessing the free lunch. Will we be reimbursed for the students using the free lunch through our school? Anybody would answer that?
So this is a vending contract. So we are vending meals to this provider. So we, we receive payment for the meals that we serve. It's not a reimbursable, we're not operating a reimbursable program for this school. So typically, when you're vending, when you're dealing with third-party vendors, they may elect to participate in the meal program so that they can reimburse and recoup their costs. But in terms of a transaction with the district, they are, they are a vendor of the meals to them. We are not conducting the meal service program for them.
Okay, I thought maybe they would. Because at the end of the day, our students do receive free and reduced lunch. And so I was assuming that maybe if we provided that for them, we would get that credit or for the students that use it. So it goes in reverse. They're the ones that later on get the credit.
They have the opportunity to do that. We would just, it's just a straight vended meal to the, to the.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second. If there is no further discussion, let's go ahead and vote. All right. Motion carried. Extension from Mr. Tillman. All right, we are now at 12.24 and 12.25. I'm adding it because I'm, I'm going to be abstaining from both of those as the founder of the organization.
I have, oh, yeah. The discussion.
Okay. He moved it. But I don't, I don't hear a second.
Was there a second?
No.
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 Okay, so I, I go ahead and ask. So with regards to the charges, is there a standard charge per student? And the reason why is because later on, I'm going to pull another one. And I don't see any consistency with charges per student. Between students that are, or parents or families doing it virtually in attendance, and then, of course, in person? And these are for, in this particular one, it's for student-focused kind of services that they have? Yes, there's a flat charge per student.
I know, but I'm wondering at the district level, do we have a standard of all these types of charges? To, do we have anything that's like a model? Okay, these are, depending on the program, we're going to be, we're going to be requesting that they don't go, their ranges are from a certain amount to a certain amount, that they don't go over a certain amount per.
I'll have to look that I'm aware of. I'm not, I'm not aware of.
And if we don't, maybe we could, should consider doing that across the board, just so that way we can be consistent. And I'm not trying to set an exact number, but I would like a range where the people that are contracts that come in don't exceed a certain amount. So I would.
Doesn't necessarily work that way. It really depends on the program now. It really depends on the program, the services, the personnel, the people. You can't have a set amount. Harold, you got any thoughts on that? Because that's almost impossible.
I would, I would just add, each program is unique and different. And so to charge a fixed charge conducive to actually soliciting vendors to provide the service.
Yes, I was referring to a fixed, more of a range, not necessarily one price, but a range that work, because we don't want also the, the high numbers where, since we don't have a range, that there's abuse in that.
We do have a not to exceed. That's the, that's the one thing that we do have that's constant. There is a not to exceed amount.
At the state level?
We, we have that in the contract, is what I'm saying. But we can look to see a range.
All right, okay. And then just one more question. Is this program in person or is this virtual? And it may be in person.
Down and bring that back to you. Because I know it was in purchasing, but I don't know if we've moved now to virtual. So I can find out.
We conclude that in a Friday update, clarity on that.
Okay. And the reason why I'm asking is because later on, you'll see another item that differentiates that different cost.
Dr. Flores?
Ms. Medina, if you look at staff analysis, it says it's for 75 students. And the approximate cost per student, per student and 500 per session for 30 weeks. So the costs are there, so.
Yeah, no, I see that. I was, I was referring to, yeah, I see the 600. I was just referring to if there was, that we have, and if we don't, if it's possible.
According to the, the services. Yeah, it's according to what services people are going and how they cost them.
Any? If not, I heard a motion on this. Is there a second? I, I heard Mr. Tillman earlier, but Dr., or Ms. Rosales Medina, still getting her questions answered.
I'm, I move.
Yeah, so who's second?
Moved and Abby.
Right, and we finished the discussion, so. Okay, so it's time to vote. You have everyone? I, I am. And can you click me, can you click me? Okay, yeah, because I need to, okay, but, okay, I have the little. I think I got it. You got it? Okay, it recorded with me abstaining. And then. I forgot, you can't do them together. Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second? And second? I'll be, okay, I'll go ahead and abstain again. We're on 25 now. If there's no further discussion, let us, we will vote. Is someone missing?
Yay, but it hasn't come up.
All right, motion carried with me abstaining. 12 point, we're now at 12.32.
This one doesn't have an amount per. So we'll have like per, per parent or per family member, per student.
$100 for 10 months. This is Summerton High School. And it's, if you open up the attachment, they do discuss a minimum of 20 or more parents for that particular amount.
I was referring to, yeah, I had looked at that earlier, but since I, I was assuming that we would try to start with all contracts. That way we can kind of easily identify how much is it per student and how much is it per or family member. So I didn't, since I didn't see that in either or, the documentation, because I know it's 20,000, 2,000 a month. And I just assumed that we were moving in that direction for all contracts when it comes to parent engagement and student engagement?
I know that we are beginning to review all contracts. I know PAX has been with the district for quite some time, and that will probably be with this particular vendor.
Okay, sounds good. So moved.
All right, it's moved and second. Did you hear it, Ms. Cunningham? Ms., Ms. Rosales Medina, and then Mr. Tillman?
And I did forget to pull 12.38. I don't know if I can have that discussion. If not, then.
But we, we, yeah. And there's no further discussion. We're good. Okay, so let's go ahead and vote. But yes, we included that one in there, Ms. Medina.
It was just a great example of how much they charge, and I, and I totally missed it on my sheet here. But, okay. We're more or less being consistent, where it's not.
Break down.
How, how are we meeting? So many parents during this time, you know, even meeting. It just doesn't make any sense. But that was my mistake. I didn't pull it. Thank you.
All right, motion carried on 12.32. All right, we are now at 13.0. Review of Board Requests. 13.1 Staff Will Review Items and Updates Requested. Ms. Altavera?
Yes, good evening, Board. And it is my goal to get us out of here today as opposed to tomorrow. So, so, all right. So we started out with Mr. Danny Tillman asking that we would look into what other districts are doing regarding teen testing for students and to consider increasing testing for SBCUSD. and to consider increasing testing for SBCUSD. Dr. Menares explained that parents have to agree for testing our students and that we would monitor and return with a recommendation. Dr. Barbara Flores asked how we are COVID-19 liaisons to ensure that they're qualified for the role. Wasn't the exact question, but I think that was the response that she's looking for. Dr. Barbara Flores asked if we were tracking the severity of COVID-19 infections in addition to them. Dr. Flores asked if we would share information about where individuals can get tests outside of the schools. And Mr. Vatier answered some of that, but pledged that we would continue to do that. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina asked if we would provide information about COVID cases from August of 2020 and then what we were doing to prepare for winter when it spiked last year. And Mr. Vatier said that he would bring that information and that we would continue to over-communicate to help prevent that kind of spike. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina asked that we would consider communication needs of families who do not have access to technology and may not know information is available. And I appreciate that. Signed that one to my. Ms. Gwen Rogers, or Dr. Sorry, Gwen Rogers asked if we would consider explaining the purposes of the COVID-19 notification letters, which we have done in a letter that we sent out to all parents just last week, but we will continue to do. Dr. Gwen Rogers asked that we would explain to families what happens when a student is out due to COVID and how this wouldn't necessarily, or how this would affect their attendance. Dr. Barbara Flores asked that we. The SBCUSD community that students and staff can be tested at school. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina asked how we would ensure that custodians wipe down all of the surfaces and that teachers had reported that they were cleaning their own classrooms. And Mr. Prese indicated that he thought that problem had probably resolved itself already, but that he would report on that. Dr. Gwen Rogers encouraged staff to develop a way for teachers custodians did miss their classrooms. Dr. Scott Wyatt asked how many scholars were on the interest list for, or how many of the scholars on the interest list for the Virtual Academy are on short-term independent study or still in school while they. And then Dr. Scott Wyatt asked that we would give a breakdown of the enrollment for the Virtual Academy by grade level and subgroup. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina asked for an explanation of what it looked like to participate in the Virtual Academy for students who are enrolled in. Rogers also echoed that and said that we should communicate the difference between the Virtual Academy and last year's distance learning. Dr. Barbara Flores asked for an employee snapshot survey about their experiences with COVID with five specific questions. Well, is the site complying with COVID protocols? Number two, how safe do you feel? Number three, how can we improve safety? Number four, how effective are our COVID safety systems? And number five, do you trust or know your COVID liaison? Abigail Rosales Medina and also Mr. Danny Tillman asked that we would bring positions that may be funded through the allocated LCAP dollars for the service delivery model to the board for approval. Dr. Barbara Flores asked, and I think Mr. Urban also agreed to follow up regarding some procedural question related to 11.3. And Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina said that she would, that asked that we would consider standardizing or consider a standardized range for per-student cost for. And to clarify if the program in 12.24 was in person or virtual. And those were all of the questions that I captured tonight.
Covered everything. And thank you so much, Ms. Altaveros. And we are moving to 4.0, but I want to. The adjournment. So, it was brought to my attention. We do want to close in memory of, and I will say the names, and I think they're going to put them up. We have Delphina Mendoza. She was an instructional aide at Bradley Elementary School. And many of you know her as Tina Gochet. She was a teacher at Parkside Elementary School. We have Frances De La Torre. She's a recreational aide at De La Torre Elementary School. And it was, when we took our break, it was brought to my attention. Judy Lee, and you may all remember her. She was like the morning custodian that would be here. And she just recently retired, but she recently passed. I think they got the information today or yesterday. So, we just want to acknowledge these individuals that contributed to our district. And we will have Ms. Judy Lee's, because they just got the information, at our next board meeting. All can put a face to her. You will, you'll know her when you do see the picture. But we want to thank them and just keep their families in our prayers because these are huge losses and we just thank them for the work that they've done. And we'll just take a moment of silence. All right, we are at 14.1, adjournment.
Go to adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you for bearing with us tonight. And I think it's right at tomorrow or close. But thank you all, and we will see you at our next board meeting. God bless you all.